I want to call this meeting in order before we get started, I think everybody is taking the habit to come out and being an resident of this little county. And before we get started, before we forget it, I wish everybody very, very Christmas. Already here, I think, about next Wednesday, the twenty-third, so it runs down, but you should remember lots of cities in the region for the season. I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I'd like everybody to stand, I'm going to have a few cameras there. For everybody to stand and play the lead.
Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for another day of life. You're the giver of life. And Lord, as we thank you for this season, knowing that you are the reason for the season, you gave your life that we could have life. You were born, God had a plan. And Lord, if we have a roof over our head, poles on our backs, and shoes on our feet, we are among eighty-five percent of the world. Let us stop and be thankful for everything that you do for us, for everything that we have. Bring our minds together, that we can be in unity, be in love, for we only go through here one time. And what will they remember us by? Let us be that light, that servant, lending help and hand, no matter if they're rich or poor, let us lend a hand and help them. And Lord, just have your way in this service and in this meeting today, Lord, that we can be a servant for you, Lord, and just work all the problem, help work out the differences. And Lord, let us come together in unity and go forward, for we must go forward and not backwards, and we give you praise for it, Lord. Thank you, let us make the right choices for our county. We love our county, we love our people, and we want to be of help. We want to pray to God, wear a smile and lend a helping hand wherever that we can. And we'll never fail to give you the praise for it all, and thank you for everyone who's took time to come here today, Lord. This is the day you made, let us rejoice and be glad in you. In your name we ask to pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, increasingly here today, and it's ready to move to allow me to take the minutes for today and take a job. Donnie Bush, Donnie Good, Roy Darrell, Ray Moore, Anthony Curry. Uh, two.
Not temptation.
Okay, you need to add it to the motion?
Yes.
To allow me to keep the minutes for today and be paid the same as the risk rate?
Yes.
You just needed to say that you didn't want it on it? We could have just done it with, Roy Darrell, Ray Moore, Anthony Curry. Okay, two, before we get started, I know you've got your agenda sheet out in front, let me go to Z, but I need to add a couple things to it. One will be AA, and it'll be a dignity session, and it's litigation dependent. And then BB, I'll call it the corner, has hired Kaylin Nater to replace George Griffiths, and it is lifted Hudson up to George's division at fifty dollars in there, and Kaylin Nater will be twelve dollars in there. Would it be BB?
And will he go and get permission to pay this bond to Kaylin Nater? I'll call it tonight, since.
I'm also going to put it on there for due payment of the bond for Kaylin, one million and.
One hundred and some dollars and eighty cents, that's probably effective January first.
What was happening, Spike?
Twelve.
Any bond is a hundred and one dollars and eighty cents, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's all I've got to do today, and we're going to make a motion to Dr. Jena as he was thinking, it's two additional handed to him, and CC will be up here.
Put up that rest.
Pardon?
Put up that. Is this your red general?
That's Kevin Durant.
BWX Y and Z, it's not on the rest general.
That can happen.
This is putting the two, if you just.
This, okay, I get the funding off the law.
Angels bills?
Yeah, B will be the consideration, other than it's county clerk budget. W will be being my bid forty-three fifty-eight, PW number thirty-six, and PW number eighty-six every time bid. X will be the consideration to pay all angel bills in the amount of three thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Three pounds seven hundred.
Thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. And then Z is to pay fifty-two dollar body shop, three hundred eighty-four dollars to repair the, I call it, the old nine-one-one for this county. Then AA, the dignity session, and BB, the corner, moving with the George, Griffiths position at fifteen dollars in there, Kaylin Nater, well dollars in there, and also to pay the bond payment for Kaylin at a hundred and one dollars and eighty cents, that would be effective January first, twenty-twenty. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Did you say my, or did you take that out?
They're skipping the oath of the owner, discussion of pay, you have feeling they like that.
And I have a claim I need to add to the agenda. Yeah, because Ken Ray was, it's the CEO of fiscal, he brought it in after I had the agenda down, and I hate for him to want to get it, it's nine dollars.
And we've got that from CC then, it was in German. How many, forty-nine-five dollars?
Ninety-five dollars for the CEO of fiscal.
Ken Ray or Ken Watts?
Ken Ray.
Okay, you all remember when we get down, we're about to hear one more. Do we have a motion, Dr. Jena, agree with the other additional?
Motion. Second.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Darrell?
Uh.
Anthony Curry?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Anthony Curry. All right, first order of business, we approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November twenty-sixth, twenty, November twenty-sixth, when we have to.
I've got a question, we'll take it, vote. On the twenty-sixth, November twenty-sixth, two thousand, happy meeting, I'll be.
Have what?
I'll be. We voted approved eight thousand dollars worth of gravel, delivered to the site and not to be stocked out. My question is, why are we not hauling any gravel within, haul creek gravel?
And two thousand dollars, they're going to go too far.
Perdition, perdition.
Road needs hauled, and we try to haul, save that what we can in the middle of the weather, and nothing on gravel and being shorthanded to come and grind it, but are you want to take that off to Jena and approve that?
My question is, when we approved the eight thousand dollars worth of gravel on the twenty-sixth meeting, why is no gravel being hauled at this point on the county road?
If you've got the gravel list, or the only ones you've got in here so far have been District Four and District One.
I'm planning, but why is the other, the other district's been, gravel's been hauled on the roads? Why are we still keeping, putting creek gravel down in the middle of winter time?
The weather's playing a big part in it, and the only thing that's got creek gravel in my regulations is Brian's Creek, they haul about ten loads up there, and I think they haul one load up in Candy, and I don't know where it's been, what's been hauled in.
Archie O'Kenny, I think the latest name of Joey Noble, put it on about Sandy Drive, complaining about the bad job that the workers did, and how bad the road was, and all the rain, that's Archie O'Kenny, Joey Noble, I think, that was Sandy Drive.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't gravel, said creek gravel on that road?
Maybe yours gravel been, or you've seen the big haul, if you know why?
You think that matters?
I don't know, but then I'm sorry.
I go in there every day, but you, why? It's got a few parts.
It's just a big haul, it's a big pile.
It's got a few parts, but I. The out there, eight thousand dollars of gravel from Hinkle, why isn't it up, up in haul?
And then I got a call yesterday, and I don't know if you guys go check that, because he couldn't get it into his house, and I don't even have, a lot of this stuff hasn't been turned in on the list. I've actually got nothing to be, and I.
I'll turn in the list of gravel to the bridge.
Thanks.
But in the list, can we, can we get the spray, something from these piles?
Get the, the spray looks better than anything.
I mean, the spray for gravel, or whatever, that's what we're taking, that eight thousand dollars is, is dent spray or fifty-seven.
Well, I just got rain, just this morning, now I hear Donnie this yesterday, I think he turned it in yesterday, the morning before, and I got sprayed this morning.
No, it's been turned in since before yesterday.
I got it, I ain't got anything wrong with putting this spray in, I know, I'm just trying to make it as far as it goes, and I got nothing wrong.
I'd recommend not even using this creek gravel there in the winter time, I use it in summer, but just start, start freezing, you won't have leaves, I mean, that might be, if you get it, but on the road, they have others.
I'll make it a priority. We don't have to use creek gravel, I mean, we don't even make a motion, I mean, I'll take the running drive, just two thousand eight over the quarry, and I don't.
Well, we can, we can, we can, we can.
Okay. So are you, are you, are you making, are you wanting to take that off of the minutes, or you want to?
No. What'd you say, Brad? That's what the agenda item right now is, approve, approve the minutes. What question? I think.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
It's a long one. I mean, if you go, I mean, you've got an interesting kind of question, wants to be done with it, but.
You ain't, you ain't going to change? Are you going to change it, or you going to leave it on there?
I'm just questioning, if I have a gravel.
Okay, motion, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular, November twenty-sixth meeting?
Well, but wait a second here, my understanding is, is we can't even get gravel down there. I'm going to ask somebody to explain that.
Yeah, Bridget came in, Bridget came in, her finger, but let's get, let's get the minutes up here, and then we do that one, get to the, to the gravel.
Not being approved of minutes, that's not reasonable. Let's discuss, actually, what's in the minutes before we approve.
Right. Okay. Donnie's on the P, what else you want to know about P?
Why, I didn't. Eight thousand dollars of gravel been put on the county road since November twenty-sixth.
Now, I got your gravel list and Elsie's gravel list yesterday, I got Ray, Roy this morning, Ray Moore this morning. We don't have to use creek gravel, we just, we can use white rock and take care of it, and again, it's a shame, it's a road that's shaking during and out, I think we're going to be all winter trying to let them down to get them where they're driving, but. Do we want to approve the minutes or not approve?
You still an asking question, why is the gravel been, not been hauled from Hinkle on the county road? Or we cut off, or we cut off from Hinkle, or, or, or we approve this, I just want to get eight thousand.
I lost a shirt down there, he's come back in, but Bridget didn't, they yesterday, that did call, and him hitting the line, that said that the gravel was.
No, Neil called me, Neil Grubbs, from Point, we was on credit home, but the, see, we went last Monday, we got two loans, Roar's mail, one went District Four, one went District One, two hundred and fifty dollars piece, that's the only gravel that's been on your own, two thousand per district so far. All right, Neil said we was on credit home, didn't know why, but Travis Banks from the law office is sending him a memo, telling him not to let us have no more gravel. So I got to digging, and we come to my house, that we have the invoices that has not been paid, says no demo.
And why is that?
They have not been given to me.
Why, why haven't the builders put on pay lists?
You might have had a question the last year or two.
I received the invoices this morning from you.
And then my secretary gave them to, you, Bridget, is that right?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay.
But what, what bill, here's what bill has not been paid, he's got us on hold, here's what bill is in, invoice on November twentieth?
Can we get her in here, explain this to them? Can we do her that?
Here's what, here's what bill has not been paid, November twentieth invoice, November twenty-first invoice, November twenty-second invoice, November twenty-fifth invoice, and December the ninth invoice, so I mean, I don't even see where that thirty, thirty days is.
December the third invoice has been.
December what?
Third, ten hundred thirty-three thirty-eight.
And I don't even have that copy.
You ship a third?
Mm-hmm.
What invoice number is that?
Four, three, three, four, four.
Are you getting these invoices from Hinkle, that's supposed to be paid, does that come to you, or Chris, how's it, explain that, listen, you don't hear it?
All right, the invoices that we get recently, I thought, when we each come in, we had gravel put, so all those regular invoices would go to Crystal, but I assumed these were for payment, so I didn't give Crystal any, I just.
Yeah, I haven't been a server long either, since I've been back.
Are those invoices, payment invoices?
No, except one. The rest, service state or being, which is the emergency, the other one is Roar, which is payment, and you've got one invoice that's regular, that went to Roar now.
But I don't think these invoices, though, even going to make it November twentieth, would be enough to put you to cut your credit off, I mean, we can check.
Why would we be cut off?
So are they going to be getting the invoices other than for payment, or they going to be like a regular, like, yes, I'll be back on there?
Yeah, it was probably the last month, but they haven't earned them.
Now, them invoices been, we just dug it tonight, this month, I haven't just, no more. No, can you go and go and see why we're not going to be?
They are.
Well, they're here since we just, they have to pay them, I only got them three or four.
Why can't somebody take us the phone, call Mar, and say, oh, we cut off?
You didn't let Bridget sit, she done had two times. We're not quite.
I understand this this morning.
Why hasn't any gravel been hauled?
Now, so it's not going to be for payment, this will be regular.
Can't get that to K House. We'll find out, somebody will take the phone call.
Here we go, one, one at a time, I don't know if you go to Bridget or not, Donnie, she said she called two or three times, didn't find that till yesterday, is that right, that was cut off?
That's my understanding.
Mine too, so, she called twice yesterday, and she called once today, but you can ask her, but I told her to shake on it.
If you didn't get a haul of gravel, I guess you didn't know if you cut off or not.
Well, we ain't going to haul gravel, they here, it's raining, we couldn't do no trouble, it was raining, but.
I still get something.
We're in here to run a lead, I answered your question, did it?
No, good luck. Why?
Donnie, calm down there, we got Bridget in here trying to find out, but they got invoices, so just hang with us.
My understanding, she just received these.
So what's, what's?
Well, it was cut off till yesterday, and I didn't know it till last night, so Donnie was wanting to know why it hadn't been paid, why somebody picked us the phone, but Bridget called two different times, that's what I'm trying to tell you, and she checked, and she got the checks yet right now, so.
Get back to my.
From now on.
A reason, a reason.
Hey, Donnie, from now on, whenever that invoice is gone, we just, I look at them, and you just have to crystal, haul it.
Okay.
And then she can get, Bridget can get them from Crystal.
Okay.
And then you hear that.
So we're not, we're not, you don't say anything?
But again, I still don't know why we would be on hold on November twentieth, after open assembly, which I don't know why, but it's November nineteenth, and then what's the pay last month, so I guess that would be for, when do we have a month to be, last month, twentieth?
Six.
So, so, these invoices may have not come from Hinkle at the time either, they mailed them out, I think, or, yeah, I don't know.
They emailed, that's where she got the hitch ride.
So, so from now on, all the invoices when they come, but again, she wants to find out why her, her credit is on hold, so she can crystal, she can, so, and then the, from, we don't have to haul, but I mean, upon Brian's Creek, I mean, as long as it is, I want to go in, use my free gravel, my gun, first, I can get paid again, I'll get, it's on the shady side of the hill, and if that is.
You put it down on the lead, do it, I had a lot of white people, probably, big rocks, bare ice.
Ice.
You go, right here, come.
There's nothing you can do about it, he says do it, we gonna do it, we get the blank, you the man in the blind.
I was saying, but I.
I mean, I, I don't like that stuff, one man tell you do something, somebody.
I don't know, I don't know.
We're taking heat for what you do, if it's, you don't, you don't, it's my cousin paying you, you got your sister, and your.
You look, you look, you look, you boys, here, here's one that probably touched the gravel off, and you, and don't, don't.
They didn't, but they don't turn loose, and you sent us up here, and we think we're blaming for something you said to do.
We still put creek gravel down.
We can't.
We turned it loose, but we still put creek.
You take the blame, you the man in the blind, and you tell us so much, pick a man to.
And if you want, if you want, and we're, that's, I mean, I mean, we can put that on it.
Well, I've turned in straight branch, and we're, we huddled, and I know I was hearing whatever, creek gravel will work.
I hear another one here, Smith.
For Miss Branch.
And we, what are those workers that are hearing that hard?
But it's not their fault, we, we, all you can do.
Now, Harshell Canyon, they're ragging us hard on the internet right now, Harshell Canyon.
I get sick from all of that, I reckon.
I, I get it, I get it from Brian's Creek, I got it from Brian's Creek, I got it from Brian's Creek.
I thought I was saying it was bad, now, like I said.
Now, it was fine in the summer time.
I raise a question, we allowed to gravel on November twenty-sixth, we've not got any gravel put on the road, from Hinkle, limestone gravel, not been put on the road, why? Why are we still hauling creek gravel in the middle of winter, when you can haul limestone gravel from the quarry?
I want to tell you again, other times, the time that we're going, make it go as far as it goes, but you all want no creek gravel on it, we won't put no creek gravel on it, we've been using it all summer, you all just now here, I hear it all summer.
I think it's all right to use it in the summer, but now, you can't use creek gravel in winter, if it gets wet, you ain't got nothing but a load.
What happens in winter is that, it don't dry out.
No.
And it's got to dry some over a pack, and in the wintertime, it rains, and it stays mushy, and it just throws it right back out, that's what happened to Harshell Canyon, it looked good, we just put it down, but then it come raining three hours later, and it forced it out all huddled, and man, they give us, they give us heart over that, and you know what, we, all we could do was put it down, make it look good, but we can't control the weather, and when it forced it back out, it, it destroyed it again.
It's already wet when you put it down, anyway.
Yeah, put it down.
It's dry, it's worse than.
So we go ahead and, you, this, we're going to haul it, and make it go through again, anything wrong? Do you want to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November twenty-sixth meeting?
Sure, this, this wasn't locked for, locked forever, this was.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November twenty-sixth meeting, twenty-sixth, motion over there, without saying. Uh, motion, I'd like to say, number eight, consideration approval of November twenty-nineteen, Justice Center, Board of President's Board, without motion. Can you take it back in?
Motion.
Goodbye to motion.
No, second.
Bill Tinker.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was in here.
Uh.
Donnie Good.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Ray Moore. Motion carries, consideration approval of finance charges and appropriation of revenue condition report, without motion.
Motion, second.
Donnie Good.
Uh.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Anthony Good.
Uh.
Consideration for approval of budget transfer, and also, we had probably a, a traditional of a brokerage budget for.
Yeah, if there's any question, yeah, just let me know. Then we'll put the.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Anthony Good.
Uh.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Consideration for approval for annual fund transfer, without motion.
Motion, second.
Uh, Donnie Good.
Uh.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Bill Tinker.
Uh.
Condition for fund active report.
Motion, second.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Anthony Good.
Uh.
Motion carries, consideration approval of all legal bills on better payment this.
Got free invoices here, I got a question about. Number one, three thousand dollars for the trust and treaty from Farm Hill Audit, voted down.
Hey, hold on, hold on, one second. Okay, what's the first one?
Uh, he voiced for an amount of three thousand dollars for the trust and treaty from Farm Hill Audit, which was voted down by the.
It's twenty-eight, after twenty-eighteen audit, right?
Right.
Okay.
That was voted down by the fiscal court, by the state on the payments, three thousand dollars.
Uh, it still hasn't been paid, and it was a twenty-eighteen bill, it was, it was fraud, it was twenty-eighteen when I came in, and this here is an audit that was done for a lot, Curry and Bridget, there were three, three candidates that are involved in it, and they had, um, they spent over so much money, they had to have a, for all of it, was nine thousand dollars, thirty thousand, three thousand dollars, and that bill is still past due.
Probably want to pay a three thousand dollar bill.
Are you saying, scratch that bill?
I said take it off the bank.
Okay, what's the next one?
Go, we vote it down.
What's the next?
Next. Uh, an amount of twelve thousand dollars from meeting John Deere Tractor Company, that was voted down, and issue bill number nine-nine-three.
Okay, uh, that was one that was voted on, I, I think, maybe a minute, ten years, that was one that y'all made a motion on, buy, and we ordered, and he came in, and then he refused to pay the bill, they want to take that one off? What's the next one?
I've got another one on the, on the Wex Place, Fleet Services, got finance charges here, seven hundred forty-one dollars, and we voted to pay that. That's the reason, I'm thinking that's the reason we had the meeting, to pay that bill, so we wouldn't have to pay those finance charges. Last year, a lot.
You, did you ask Crystal, why they still on the crystal?
Oh, no.
What? Uh, Miss Baker charged a, overcharged, I mean, finance charge, eleven forty-one on this bank.
That was the reason.
And then, and then another, another fact that I've never seen come through my office, we actually got charged fourteen hundred some dollars, did we ever get credit back for that, for the crystal?
That's one I would send to the category, I have no idea, maybe it's credit back. The reason we got the seven hundred some dollar finance charge on this bill, when you all had the first court meeting in the last month to pay the fuel bills, Jeff had a question to, to deal with curris, which was with Jiffy Mark.
That was the November twenty-second meeting?
No, it was.
Before that.
Before that. But you all didn't pay the Wex Place, do you recall that, Jeff?
Not really.
You had a question about Jiffy Mark bills, because of that curris.
And it was two curris in the. Twenty-second meeting.
It's also, it's still a curris.
Yes, so you all didn't pay the Wex Place, you all didn't pay it to the regular meeting, which was the twenty-sixth.
That was in Washington, Jiffy Mark, it was really the curris.
But you all didn't pay the Wex Place, it was on the agenda as well.
He called the meeting on.
Huh?
We made a motion not to pay the Wex Place.
You all didn't pay any fuel bills, you said not to pay any bill, any fuel.
He thought a special week, it was on the twenty-second of November, I watched the tape, that he questioned three invoices.
Which was first?
One of them was an amount of eighty-four seventy-two, the other was one oh eight oh two, the other was two fifty-seven seventy-eight, he did not pay, that was on a Friday meeting.
That was Jiffy Mark.
We had a, the regular meeting.
You questioned Jiffy Mark, but you didn't pay the Wex Place.
But then it was too late, the time they got the bill, so they charged us seven hundred forty-one.
You all predicted on the twenty-sixth regular meeting, but the bills are due to twenty-eighth, therefore, we have time, and this has happened several times.
But we could have just paid the bill on the twenty-second, saved the seven hundred dollars, questioned the three tickets after. The meeting, when was this bill due?
The twenty-eighth. Bills were always due the twenty-eighth.
Due.
That's the reason I asked Jeff when he first came in if he would call special meets to pay the fuel bills so we don't have to pay these finance charges. We can't afford finance charges. We did well with the fuel bill.
That's happened more and more.
How many... How many times has this been on?
Several times. We paid seven hundred something last month and now we got another seven hundred something. Or that's one eight, maybe seven forty-one. Uh, whatever's on the agenda for this time.
Seven forty-one, six-six-seven.
We paid seven hundred something last month. So we had a twenty-second meeting, we made a motion to not pay Jiffy Mark or Wex place either.
You questioned the three tickets?
Cause you questioned Jiffy Mark bill.
Okay.
The offer.
Yeah.
Cause it was coming up first thing, but it was... But he came in the next day and then voices had had offer next day.
Yeah, Paul came in with...
Yeah.
Number twelve.
Yeah.
And it's actually... Offer due conversion, very much.
Excellent.
All right, are you voting not to pay the seven forty-one on the way back?
I have this question, I'm sure we have to pay that.
Well, if you don't, give the double. Okay. Or move on next time.
So... So the two bills are taken off the agenda, the three thousand TDA bill for twenty-eighteen only?
How we gonna eliminate this instead of paying seven hundred dollar one?
If you... If you all rip the leg, I was gonna change the meeting to the second weekend, uh... Other month and that's when we changed the date, we couldn't change the time, so...
I think... I think if we vote to pay the bill and then... Change the sign, we can get it sent out.
We didn't vote to pay the bill, you said, right? On the way back.
But... But if we'd have paid the bill on the twenty-second, we could've questioned the invoices later, but we gonna have to pay it. We want to... We have to...
How about this twelve...
But this cost us seven hundred forty-one dollars, six-six-seven.
Bill that we made and we gonna have to pay it for so many years, don't we?
What?
The twelve hundred meat tractor, y'all want to buy the debt, make sure I don't want to go to pay it, everybody.
Have... Have they said anything about what they would charge us if they take that tractor back? Have you even discussed that with them?
Didn't have to.
I mean, the... The Bush Allen?
No, we... If you... If you all been in my situation this summer on... On weed, you won't even think about anything.
She can't use it.
Um, probably should've talked about that before the party, I guess, but, uh... So we gonna make a motion to pay all legal bills except the TDA bill and the twelve thousand dollars for meat tractor.
Well, if we'll take the bottom, I have two invoices here. Uh, Sheriff Robin wants charged against his support, I guess, basically what they are. And then what they... I was up for just the annual dues, those annual dues to the sheriff. And, uh, he does, uh, the floor in there is in disrepair. And, uh, they want contract with a little time improvement, I've done a voice here today, I have, uh, almost over ninety-four dollars.
The sheriff's department pay that, we don't even prove that in our meeting.
Well, we can... He wants it paid out. If he wants to pull back and draw on it, it's probably support for the others. We have about...
Can we add that to it if we already adopted the game then, Brandon?
What's that?
That's the invoice is...
The sheriff's property.
We already adopted it.
You gonna take this?
Playing with this. The... You have claims at the end, I mean, I would... I would have them separate than...
Right, yeah, I mean, I make... I make a note, I told my god on here today.
I... You know, if you vote on the claims list as of right now, Crystal had one few moments ago, it's gonna be a separate agenda item. I would make those a separate agenda item. You... You were voting on the claims list, it's submitted in fact.
I would have thought I got the Kenny rights.
That's what's happening, sir.
Okay.
Okay, motion to make, uh, pay all legal bills except for the three thousand dollars, the TDA and the twelve thousand dollars for meat tractor, now, Martin.
Motion. Second.
Uh, make more.
Uh...
Bill of change.
Uh...
Donnie Woods.
Uh...
Order. Nate, what? Your thing?
Uh...
Consideration approval of the past, uh, approval of a second reading of document of budget amendment number six.
We can't go forward with that. The reason being, before we can have a second reading, we have to get the O G approved. Because the change in government administration, there's... They just recently appointed commissioner yesterday. He's not had the chance to go through there and sign holidays and stuff, we have to hold on to that.
Okay, eighteen, consideration approval of first reading of budget amendment number seven.
All right, there's that. An ordinance relating to the fiscal year nineteen twenty annual budget and then thereof. Whereas the Breathford Fiscal Court has realized unbudgeted receipts from the vault, from the general road, A B C and... And A B C funds, bid ordained by the Breathford County Fiscal Court, Congress of Kentucky. Now, you also notice, uh, solid waste collections fund, which forty-five hundred is there, we'll talk about that further down, but that is part of this budget. It's on the garbage bill collections.
I need to actually read it. Do you hear it again, Bill? I was looking, I shouldn't have.
All right. Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash V A dash zero-zero-seven. An ordinance relating to the fiscal year nineteen twenty annual budget and... And amendments thereof. Whereas the Breathford County Fiscal Court has realized unbudgeted receipts from the general road, A B C and solid waste collection funds. Bid ordained by the Breathford Fiscal Court, Congress of Kentucky.
Have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Uh, make more.
Uh...
Okay, Donnie Woods.
Uh...
Order. Okay, uh, next, uh, Senator Greg Gully and Tim Aubrey have picked on behalf of Wascanyi Bond Air Hard Department Analyst Service and Breathford Wolf Analyst Service.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Uh, all right. Again, the introduction is that Greg Gully, uh, with Breathford Wolf. Uh, Wascanyi has got their service going, uh, have three trucks, most taken, uh, that they have about on the staff. Uh, question is, they want to be put on the nine-one-one list. Um, as far as Breathford Wolf is concerned, we got no issues with the uncovering their area. Uh, it's a long ways out, everybody knows that, and actually, um, when I came into this and saw that they were done there, I was kind of glad, cause there were several ways to get down in there. Uh, we've talked back and forth, we've talked more different options, um... One option that Tim may mention is doing an every other week rotation to try to get these heads up that have been on beforehand. At first, I... I knew it, it's always a good idea, but here's my reservations with that. Uh, he's gonna keep the fire district area. And every week, he's wanting the four county nine-one-one calls. Well, that's well over half of the time, I guess, the nine-one-one calls. Uh, financially, you know, they're a fire department, they're a bottom profit. I get that. We are a business, just like you guys are. You guys have the bottom line, we have to have money to function. Um, my issue with that is if we cut out more than fifty percent of our calls, then, you know, it's not survivable, survivable situation. We can't do it financially. Um, I, again, I have no issues with it and currently want to stack down in that area because it is so far away and... Bottom line is, I tell all my people to watch out for the patient, and that is right for the patient for... Watch down there, everything's gonna work out. Again, I'm not sure exactly what all he's, uh, he's needing... What are we asking for? I know he wants every other week, but I... I just say, we can't do that every other week. Um, if we want to discuss it further and then bring it back to you guys, you know, that's fine. If you guys are dead, talking, making a decision right now. I will tell you that this week, I have a hook on schedule because I don't remember, I am meeting with Hazard Dispatch. Uh, we've discussed, uh, Tim and I have discussed a little bit about trying to figure out where all the calls are coming from. Um, maybe I can get a better idea of their capabilities in Hazard. Right now, I think we don't know. I'm making room about the whole process and that's what I want to learn. Uh, as far as Tim knows, um, again, I have no issues with that and I encourage them to cover their area. Uh, but that's where I'm standing right now, and unless we can work something else out, I just don't think it's financially feasible to either of us if we try to do this. I think that... I think that financially, both of us will end up failing or decreasing the level of service that we're able to provide to the county. Kind of why, not just their area, kind of why. Uh, I have no issues with backing him up. They get terrific calls, leading back up, I guess, we've actually signed a new joint agreement. It's all the same getting, we both have the C O M's for the county, so both of us can legally run in this county, it's not... It's not the issue at all. Issue is the nine-one-one calls getting paged out back and forth. We definitely don't want the every other call, because I've heard, I just started this a month ago. I've heard too much about every other call, or any other, any of those stuff, we have, so we look, we do not want that. I don't want that.
It's a nightmare. We can't... We can't go back to what you were.
That is for. I don't want that. There's arguments between... Not officially.
What are you... What are your suggestions?
My suggestion right now is give them their area, let them have it, and we can still back each other up. Uh...
What are you saying with their area?
Uh, their fire district, what is it, eleven-ten and four-sixty-seven?
Four-ten.
Four-seventy-six, I'm sorry.
Everything's up.
Yeah, that... That entire area, which comes as their fire district. Um, I have a problem with that. Um, I don't want to get in too much, but y'all don't really need to hear, but if it becomes a staffing issue, we start trying to rotate back and forth, both of us will lose people, because we can't. If I say work today, don't work tomorrow, you know, you're not gonna stick around for that. You're gonna go hunt something else. It's gonna happen to both of us. Both of us are gonna have issues with keeping staff. Uh, pretty well staff, we can always use more people. I've got, both counties, I've got at least some, like payroll, uh, probably, uh, clean regulars in this county. Uh, still some, you know, working today, late or something like that. I won't have that. Uh, my people are not gonna stick around when we're... I'll work this week and I'll work next week, these regular people, and that's... That's what I'll have to happen, I'll have to adjust staffing for that. Uh, when that happens, then you're gonna start decreasing the amount of services you're able to provide, provide, as well as decreasing the people that's available to you to come in and work your calls. I'm just guessing, but I'm assuming Tim would have the... The same issues with getting people in. He may have nothing to stack it right now, and that's good because we're both doing good as far as staffing. But I think we start rotating around, try to add people and then come back, you know, next week and take those same people off, I think you're gonna have issues. I think those people are gonna go elsewhere and find regular work.
That doesn't work. Are you saying you want to have... You want one end of the county and the other, and the other end of the county?
I'm pretty much saying, let them have the Wascanyi Fire District area, and we'll cover the rest of them. We've covered it. Since he's taken over, we've combined those two services that work in the back end. Uh, since Jared's taken over, uh, we've covered, uh... They run calls in our area, we run calls in their area, and that's the way that we'll continue. I mean, just to back each other up, that's not an issue. Uh, I think they actually worked right over fifteen and four-five the other day, so I guess the truck was coming through or something.
So it just happened to be?
Yeah, just happened to be there.
If you get a call from, let's say, on fifteen at the off street, and we... They call you, and the other, Wascanyi is culture, so what, you call them, say, pick it, make it call, or has it worked?
Well, that's the issue.
Well, I'll speak up on that behalf, Donnie. That is just too much time responding from one to the other. When we can allow one more call, we need to react quick. That was the issue the last time. Our citizens in this county was put on the back burner, and I won't have it this time. I'll speak my mind.
That's what I'm saying. You know, if... If you get a call, they don't know who's got caught in the area. I mean, if they call, they call Wolf Reddick.
That's... I... That's where I would like to see maybe Hazard be able to just call those... That person in that area directly.
And that's something we would have to talk to the post about, because that's putting a lot of liability on the dispatcher. And I don't know if they can do that. I don't know that I will ask them to do that, because that's a lot of liability. When you get a nine-one-one call, you need to react quick, not them sit down and hear who called.
Right, well, so they just probably have to...
If you guys sit down together, that's what we...
We...
This is the last meeting.
You... We briefly talked, what, twice?
Yeah, we was eating, having breakfast together a couple more.
Yeah. And... And what she was... I'm sorry, wait. Uh, what she was saying, I don't know the capabilities of the post. Um, landlines are not an issue. You know, landlines runs in, it's gonna pop up on post where it's at. And if it's in that one area, they'll... They'll know that and they'll know we'll page out anymore, they'll know we'll page out of us. Cell phones, I don't know what it reads when it... When it comes in. It may show on the... If I go in Morgan County, if I call in on my cell phone, the address pops up on, as my home address, don't matter where I'm at in county. But I'm not sure if it shows up a tower.
It does a tower. Here it is in a chase.
Yeah.
Chase work for the post, he can answer a lot of questions. That's what I have.
That's what I'm getting with, uh, uh, little Fudd, Fudd Hayes.
Christopher.
Christopher, I'm sorry.
You guys, like Dale said, you guys have sat down and tried to work among yourselves and come up with a break?
We just... Just bounced back and forth and, uh, and Tim's initial was every other week. And I... And I get knee jerk reaction of, that sounds pretty good. And I got back in to start looking at numbers. Every other week doesn't work because he's still getting his area twenty-four-seven, and we're only getting the county having the time, so it's a roll of fifty percent of the time he's getting it.
And I notice that this is happening several times, is that we... The nine-one-one times has dropped. We go out, we... It's on the watch row. We get there, it's, I know twice for sure, that then they... They was already there. Well, to me, they should've been responsible enough to tell us that, hey, we're covering this, that, no, we drove all the way up there.
Well, you gotta work together.
Okay, now, let me ask you this, Jared. Since you brought that up.
Yeah.
If you knew it was on the watch row, why did you holler at them and ask if they was anyway, they could get it? Because they're gonna get far a lot bigger than you are.
Right.
I agree totally.
I agree with that.
So, I mean, like I told you, actually, we've got to work together before we can move forward.
But that, you know, our first initial response was to go because we've come down this.
And I told...
I understand, but you can still holler at once if you're in route.
Right.
So I can be there before you are.
I told our dispatchers, if that happens, they are to call in there anyway, at least call. So if that's not happening, then...
And you... Is it... Is it happened?
As of today, that has never happened.
Okay, and that's something I need to know about, and that's something I need to talk with my people about. But I also have to direct to them, if they get, it doesn't matter where it's at, but if they get there and they're on scene, they're assist. You know, if they don't need it, then they'll move back home. But if they did, I don't even care if it's... If it's, uh, a full rest, if they want extra hands back there, doing pressure, jump in there, do it, you know? We'll work the other part out at the end.
That's the reason I wanted the two parties.
Let's know that. I... I did not know that, and I had told them that they knew they need to be called.
That's the reason I wanted both parties to sit down with the fiscal court, so we can see what the issues are firsthand from each one of us. That way we can sort of make the mill, because we can't go back to what it was before.
Uh, I was a year in, but I don't want that.
I like to speak on that. I've been... I've been on this exactly in years, and what it was before, I made a good service. I appropriated the county emblems from B O S service, I did lay O S service. Uh, I'd be going home, but this bigger back porch, I mean, the air. Yeah, Woods, you're all gonna have the same problems. That's my prediction. Come back here a year from now, two years, you still gonna have the same problems, so you gotta do services. The only way to remain to get that is have one service. Who knows if that ever happened? I made a good service, that's why I'm standing here today. I'm not somewhere else, okay? Uh, I put my patients first. Uh, Tim said last week, or last month, he wasn't in it for the money. Man paid you that he's not in it for the money? Don't wait. He's your timer. You can't make it without money. Your workers won't work. You tell your workers that they paid you this week, cause I don't have the money. Where they gonna be at?
But, but, uh... What kind of text is that? He said he didn't receive a penny from it.
He... He said he wasn't in it for the money. He's in it for to help the patients, and we all are. I was in it to help the patients, but I was in it for the money too. And if you're not, just like this is court, if you four guys sit there and say, we're not in it for the money, you get your salary up. Are you going to do it? No. You're in it for the money, but you're also in to help the county, correct? The county's paying you all to do a service. The taxpayers, whether it's Medicare or Medicaid, are paying these guys to do the service. If you want senior to take it back to Medicare or Medicaid and say, we don't get your money, we just let the patients, you're not gonna be in for long. So I made a good service. Uh, way it was before, yeah, there was a lot of, uh, confusion in nine-one-one. We sat down, we discussed it. We tried to talk... Talk about the monthly rotation, weekly rotation. Hazard before said, no, it's up to you all to rotate the way you want. We're not gonna sit, let me get a call here and say, oh, uh, this goes to, uh, Aron Med, or this goes to Macintosh, or this goes to wherever. They don't want that, in all of them.
And I think...
So we had to, um, you know, cover this twenty-four-seven, and during that time here, if you're gonna say, hey, I was asleep at, uh, one o'clock in the morning, I missed, I didn't hear the tones drop. I think we're still up. So tones drop, there's gonna be confusion, who's up next? And it sounds like bigger than you are. Sounds like, well, they're fighting over a run. Not many times we answered wrong, the service answered wrong, we usually said, well, we're sorry, go ahead and take that run. You know, that's the way it works. Uh, so like I said, wait a year from now, if they're both still in business, they're both gonna say, look, this is not, this is not Peter's cream, this is working perfect, it's not, it's going to work perfect. You know, I don't care who's next here, and if he's coming up with whatever, it's not, but you both have to be in for the money. If you're not, what if you're going to be gone, or I'll take somebody else, or something. You know, don't put me in my past, in my service now, because I did it the best, my mom did it the best, and if y'all could do it any better, that'd be.
Maybe in the years from now, or if we're still around, we'll find that.
That's right.
And so you're not wanting to put you down, you know the headache that it was.
It was, that's why, that's why I'm worried, I had, I had that two years that.
I'm not putting you down, more than you're putting me down. But here, it is, uh, it's a headache.
And puts us in a bad position. About these decisions, when we're not even, uh, we're just using gallons of sand, so.
Right. But, but, yeah, if somebody's been in that in years, it, there, there is no simple quick fix, or this is going to work perfect, it is not going to.
Now, you're going to have this to grave.
You are. Especially when it comes down to when you can't pay your bills. You know, it's going to be, well, I need more runs, or, you know, somebody's hand or dumping. The thing of Watts, though, I, I was listening to the radio, what happened in Watts, there was tones dropped on, I don't know if it was Watts Road, Mackinac Road. Okay, the reason that Brett and Wolf responded, they're on the nine-one-one list, not Watts County, so they responded, tones dropped, post, uh, dispatched them out, they said they got them wrapped, and they did, never heard another word, until they got on scene, and they notified the post that, well, Watts County's already on the scene, uh, patient cares, whatever, they're taking care of the patient. Well, Watts County should have said, and, and, and if I'm mistaken, their worker, Watts County said, well, we're, we got a direct call. Okay, if they got a direct call, Watts County should have hollered at Brett and Wolf and said, uh, we got a direct call, we're responding, or we're already on the scene, because it endangers their lives, Brett and Wolf, running C four-nine, lights and sirens, to get up here to this patient, when not knowing that, and what service is already on the scene. So they, they should have said, hey, we're already on the scene, uh, yep, we need assistance, or you all are sitting away. That, that communication thing, there's going, could save lives, not only their lives, yours' lives. You're traveling down the road, here comes an ambulance, you all hit, you know, because they're running signal nine, but.
I know what they have, you know, if they don't have a nine-one-one responsibility at the time, what makes me expect to take up somebody at the station set?
My understanding, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, you're twenty-four-seven right now, I'm correct.
We, we are, oh, hold on, we, we are required by statute, by the law, to have a paramedic on duty twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. We, we have two crews, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty.
That's part of your CON, right?
Or our CON.
Well, he may be right, uh, communication, and I, I apologize to Tim, I didn't, I, I did tell the dispatchers, if something happens, they aren't notified then. Uh, obviously, it's not happening, so that's on me, there's, there's nobody else, but that's on me.
It's back to y'all, work to get, order everything out.
We're not getting on the same page.
Get it on the same page, it's like, it's like, like Steve was mentioning there, you know, get it, get it on, on the table, so to speak, then that we go there, I mean, there going to be times come up, I know we're going to have issues, I know that. But, but ain't nobody knocking Mackinac Avenue or Avenue the past, we, we sat here and hearing the same argument that we're hearing right now, you know? And it, and it wasn't a good for nobody.
I just hear, I just hear, I don't know the history, I just hear, and, well, I mean, he currently, but it's all time, and that's not, that's not what it is. I will tell you, once I talked to Chris this week, I'll know more about their capabilities down there, and he said they weren't willing to do certain things. I'll say, well, maybe the technology's changed, maybe, maybe it's easier on them, but, yeah, you're right, you're, they don't want, they just want to know to get somebody out. They probably don't care which one goes out, they just, they just want to get somebody out, at least out of the world. I don't know what, what they're capable of, I don't know what they're willing to do, and we're kind of handcuffed with that, Tim. You may know more about it, Tim, I, I don't know much.
Tim.
But I'll know more by the end of the week, for sure.
Tim was clear, he also works at Site Placeville, so he knows sort of how the dispatchers that comes.
Yeah, if you make a nine-one-one call in half a sentence around the county, you, you, you use as quick as I installed it.
Yes.
But, uh.
Well, then you need to program it to.
But, um, um, as far, as, as far as, uh, as far as nine-one-one calls from cell phones, and Chase, great, if I get off the track here, but if, if you call nine-one-one from a cellphone, you know, it does show up the self-identified, it does not show up the phone area. But, once you type in, you know, very first thing dispatcher asks you, where is your address? So you give your address, they type that address into CAD, it populates CAD immediately with that address, and tells them immediately what fire department EMS services are responsible for that coverage. Is that fast, assuming it matters three seconds? So the cellphone thing is not really an issue, the dispatcher's typing the address, if it does not populate it automatically from the land, they just type it in, there it is, it tells them what it is. It tells them who the fire department is, who the EMS services is, and who loves, you know, automatically. So, uh, you know, Steve, and I apologize, I have never said anything derogatory about you to order for any of those services, never. Are, and I am not.
In, in your application, that you buy for the last.
Public record.
Yeah, I've got a copy of it.
So, so, um, you know, we are, we are not in this for money, we're not. Now, do we need to pay our employees? Yes. Do we need to buy diesel fuel for the ambulance? Yes. But I'm not drawing salary, I will never. The only person we're paying to manage the services is Mr. Patricia Baker, and we pay our E N Ts and our D A. Our board members don't receive a dime, and a lot of them are sitting here behind me. They will never receive a dime from the ambulance service or the fire department, we did this for the community. You know, five, five years ago, when we reopened the public state, uh, fire department, and we started with nothing, and we've come a long way, but nothing but community support and hard work.
You sure have.
So, so, we want, we, we want to serve and protect the people of Brett and Camp, the whole county, and our fire district has to be our primary goal, because that's the people that support us and taking care of us and got us where we are today. But we would also love to be able to, to extend that arm out to the rest of the county, and, and, and help everybody in Brett and Camp. And that, that's our goal. So, you know, and, and years ago, when, when we had the two services that, that attempted the fifty-fifty shared calls, it, you know, at times it went fine, and at times it, it was kind of confusing. So, that's the reason we suggested, when we, when I met with Greg, we suggested that we do a weekly rotation of nine-one-one calls, that way, at eight o'clock on Monday morning, and we just pick my people, just out of head, that this was, this was your week, and this was our week, and we knew that beforehand. There was no bickering about anything, there was no opportunity for bickering about anything, because everybody knew. And, and just, this was just our way of trying to serve the public, and serve Brett and Camp. I have a question for you. Yes, you, you might have, speaking of government, you go over maybe in the summer, too. That's fair.
That legally you had to have a truck available all the time.
We had to have a paramedic on the schedule.
So if there's something about such, you always, can we assume that any time we did a follow-up, they could want to have twenty-four-seven, A L S service, pass it, and then Watts County department?
If we, if we get into the nine-one-one rotation and respond to nine-one-one call, yes.
That's fair.
Uh, because, you know, back to college, we didn't know when we had to have a truck or not, we can't trucks to handle a lot. You always have, you always have a truck sitting in Watts County. We respond to nine-one-one call, we don't know what you're on it. If you don't, you're out there, and then no responsibility, tell us, and we tell our crew to handle it. And, like, say, like, if you, while your primary week over, what were you staffing at? I'm sorry, what were you going to staff at in the primary week? We, we'll, we'll have a truck somewhere in Jackson, and we have, we have two options available to us, to have a truck in the city of Jackson, twenty-four-seven, and we'll also have a truck at Watts County. Is the one in Watts County V L S? It could be, that, that lets them run by, and now things go. We can, we can route it out of there. So on prim, so on the primary week that we're on? Yep. We get Watts Road call, what happens? But, what would be better for the patient? Exactly. You know, it's obviously you.
That's where I, that was my issue.
But, that's where it's going to, are we going to have to drive up there, and then it's not going to be better for our patient that we pull it out of town? No, absolutely not, we, you know, and, and we, in our, in my, in my idea that I talked to Greg about, you know, the only other thing that we ask, is we being the primary responders, the primary EMS responders for our fire district, because we, we need to take care of the people in our fire district, and we're right there. Why, why would you drive from Jackson to a house that I can see across Wash Creek, across the creek? Front, front of our fire department with a, a paramedic in the N G setting there. That's why we, that's why we're saying, uh, eleven-ten and four-seventy-six, and we take all of that country up in there, and then as far as, because we don't know, uh, number, call number, volume. But I have, I have a little figure of that out here. Right, yeah, right, but, I mean, probably would drive, and, I mean, there's no doubt, there's probably some more in town. But your mileage is sure. You're, you get, you're paying the mileage where I want, you know? I, you know, you're, you know, you're so many miles already out. Sure. And if I, if I may take a point in town, but that might not equal to seven, you know, for mileage, you know? That's how you get paid, you know, you get paid with my mileage, so.
Split it in half. Split it in half. Don't give a third to one and two-thirds to the other.
But that's what you're asking for, you're asking for your dispatch all the time, twenty-four-seven, and no, hell, you.
That part makes sense.
Yeah, that, and I'm not arguing with that at all, but what I am arguing about is the other two weeks a month, is you're getting seventy-five percent of the calls, and you're getting twenty-five percent of the calls you're giving to your area. And it is, and, and I'm not arguing that at all, I would put that out.
Yeah, I'll take the percentage of that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just told, I'm pretty much, you see what I'm told.
That's what I suggest.
Take the north side, near Wolf County, which is where you go anywhere, and you have the north side, and we have the south side, now split it in two-thirds and one-third, split it in half.
Well, I mean, where, where is the half mark?
Probably somewhere in the, fifteen north goes one, fifteen south goes there, that way it's, that right there.
I still want to see what he said, what he did earlier, that, uh, maybe even do a heat map before the calls come from that.
They, they can put it on the map, they can, you know, they can, uh, they can print you off like a spreadsheet, or a, that's it. But they can't populate on the map, or somebody else.
I mean, if you all want it, not that bad, boy, how much is it to two?
I'm sorry.
What's, I mean, what are you willing to pay?
To pay?
I mean, you know, I mean, it's a business, this is a business, I've, I've spent over a million dollars. We, we've spent a lot of money too, that we didn't have, that we didn't have to spend.
Right.
We, we have fully, uh, few people deal with Brett and County, we have not too people being labor taxes in Brett and County. We are supporting Brett and County, uh, do our service. The, the, uh, red light, it makes no sense for somebody to have a red light or something, but, but the bottom line is, it's sort of like Steve said, there's not enough, I'm, I'm a number man, I've run a successful ambulance service over the years, I'm a number man. There is not enough funding in Brett and Camp to support two full-time ambulance services, and, and funding, and good, and good, and possible subsafety, Medicare, Medicaid on it, there is not enough funding, just four, four, five minutes.
Now, there's one, I've won, I've won a place off, Jeff, and I know Fanny's County, and most are going, and, uh, and during the conversation, I told him, I said, oh, if you realize it, I said, watch volunteer, water department, and got a CON, and I even laid in the championship shirt, you might have heard of it.
Uh, or, or.
Okay, both of them made the protest at the same time, and I told him, I said, maybe you look at one of them, and you're going to save some money, but I think at the time, maybe you already bought it, when you did that day, and then, because I went to Franger, and I went into Judy, and he told me that, uh, the kid we should tell, again, I told him to talk to you that morning.
Yeah.
So you, you don't think that you guys just save and split it fifty-fifty, you can make it on that?
You want.
People like to get on.
The numbers, the numbers don't matter.
How many ambulances, if you guys got running, right now?
Do we staff, we staff two twenty-four-seven, uh, most days we staff three. Two twenty-four-sevens, and then, um, do we have other?
Three or five. All those, all those.
And then, like, eighty percent of the time, we also have two A L S trucks there. You know, we use that paramedic, and he's got two community here, I mean, there's no doubt about it, I mean, that helps a lot.
You wouldn't wait a hundred times, if we'll send our trucks out, we'll call down to the campus, and say, uh, we, we got our, our license fixed, and we go out, drive up here, drive around with a B P or something, and just sort of have the truck here to follow. Just pick it up, run, and then, it happens, I wouldn't be done, but it happens through, um, B P.
I have no idea, we, we, uh, primary, uh, six paramedics are primary for Brett and Camp. We have another, this human gets down, just come off the first one, thirty-eight, eleven paramedics on staff. I don't want to step in the middle of the yard.
And then, you know, we also have Grace, instead of to go as well, you know, he's there, uh, you know, it's, it's.
We can, we can run and do a good job, and we can run and hype.
Let me ask you something, and all parties get to get here and set a date, and try to work this out, county, county, what are the legal of that?
And that, that is another thing, I mean, I don't, you know, there's legal side when you start to get into, you know.
It's not equal.
What we've always had in the past, it's up, it's up to the post, just like Crystal said, and on the other side, however, it's convenient for them, but, you know, you're dealing with people's lives, and you're just, and it has to be, and that's, it has to be set up in a way that, just like someone would describe, soon as the address comes in, somebody's got to be dispatched, so if there's confusion.
It, it, that's what we, we.
Council, I'm tired of times.
Negotiation, can the post be part of this negotiation?
Well, they didn't, they didn't tell us what they can do, and they haven't passed, they said.
We can ask, if we want to call, especially with the two parties, I can ask Chris to come down, but, because he is the supervisor, please, Matt. And he knows, and if he's got any issues, he can arrest at that time, and sort of.
I definitely mentioned it when I seen him this week, saying, and talking about, everybody getting together for your.
I, I can tell them that. And, and, you have a, you have a.
It's going to take some time to work this thing out.
It is going to take time.
No, as we, as we go through this, always in the past, and Steve knows this well, this folks went out there, which is county ambulance services, tribe ambulance services, and all sorts of stuff, and that's no longer the case. I mean, there's no longer any contract issues, who gets the nine-one-one is simply designated by the fiscal board, and how it's designated, but again, that's a post you need to take their guidance, somehow, just do it.
Absolutely.
And Tim, just let everybody hear, if you're here, and our trucks are going, or, Richard, if you're here, and our trucks are going down in there, we're not calling you on these other ones, I got to know, I didn't know that that was, I got to know, so I'll get up on you back in a minute.
But, but you're responsive, not crazy, two centuries ago, we didn't get that.
You can see, I, I mean, don't like stuff, and, and, I, they've been directed to at least a ton of you guys, and, and, or a few more as well, if we have them, if they're safe. I got to know this, I, I'm trying to be as transparent as I can, I got to know.
And I would say, absolutely, please understand, first and foremost, I'm not EMS, I'm a nurse, been doing it for thirty-five years. So, I was there the first day of the hospital, I've been in this community for a very long time. My neighbors, your neighbors, are who I'm here for, because I can sure make a lot of money with hospital. But, if there's a call, and we can't get to it in a timely manner, I'm going to call you, whether it be in Jackson, Quicksand, North, Wolf County, wherever, it doesn't matter, because I'm there for the patient, and that way that patient die.
Yeah, I heard that, that one. And, uh, yeah, I'll try to call them, they got looped.
Yeah, we were talking about a couple of loans, and, and we were out of that loop, I mean, we, we were in the loop, and now we're completely out of that loop.
So, I mean, are you responding to your fire district at this point, Tim, or you're all still?
We're going, yeah.
Okay, so you're still.
Like I said, if it's down in there, and like he said, either one of you can know, I got to know it, I can fix it, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I'm.
But if they, if they do go, that's automatically letting us know that they're there, they're available, they're going to be there quick.
Okay, Tim, we can set up a meeting, let's see how you all respond with one another, work together, because that's going to be a test, and I'm going to be watching closely. Because like I said, we've got to get along together before we can move forward.
And, you know, and then I know people that listen to the radio, I think if this starts causing rumors, is that they'll say, you know, people will think, well, Watts or Brett, Wolf, we don't, they, they must not have a truck, but they, they're, you know, there's nothing else on them. You know, I think that probably is just brought up, but.
I'm not worried about rumors, I'm worried about facts, when it comes to the.
I'll deal with that.
Yes.
And none of us have been on the radio, by the way, Watts County's not on the radio, so I've never spoken on the radio in the time that I've been there, and none of my paramedic corps E N Ts have either, so there's not a beat cream going on on the radio.
No, I'm not hurting. So, I want to make sure that that's understood, we're not there to do that, we're there to help the patient. Mr. Gillett, I would like to address one thing, or Chase, I'm going to want you out, if you would. We have some issues that I want to address, and I want the actual public to know, Chase, if you would.
Okay, uh, I'm Chase Dean, I'm the chief of the Jackson Fire Department.
I'm the chief of the Jackson Fire Department, Fire Department. Uh, we've had several meetings since the Jackson Fire Department will meet every two weeks. I went three meetings in a row and there's nothing from my guys but trials and complaints, but having to work with the ambulance service. Uh, because, I mean, we just run across several issues, some of them miserable, some of them not. Uh, they're just paraphrasing here, uh, which I gave you a copy of.
Yes.
Uh, because it was requested writing after we spoke on the phone. But just some issues that we ran into. We ran into motor vehicle crashes in which the fire department was left with, uh, patient care. We do provide the execution services, and we do not have a mutual aid agreement with Red Bull to provide such services. We've always done it, and we're not gonna let the public suffer. We don't necessarily care. If there's something needs to be done, we're gonna do it. And there's, uh, two occasions, uh, one of which happened on August the twenty-sixth. Uh, people over in the creek, I was personally there. I was down over the hill trying to cut, helping cut the people out. We had to tell the ambulance service personnel to come over the hill and help us get these patients out of here. We had four of them standing up in the road looking at us. Uh, also on another occasion, uh, on the fourth of September, uh, we had a subject trapped underneath the vehicle. And, uh, I was, I was not there for that one, but my assistant chief was, and he stated that there was no patient care done until they completely removed the subject from the vehicle. He says, he doesn't know of any EMS personnel that was there, that's ten of the patient while they were getting big wop of it. Uh, and there was another, uh, issue, some of these are, uh, more severe than others. Uh, but, uh, those two that I just mentioned both resulted in fatalities later on. Uh, then there was one on, uh, October the tenth, ATV crash, bottom of the ginorm, where both the medic and the EMT left the patient. There was about ten firefighters on scene because we thought we couldn't go out, had to go up the hill to get these, this guy. But, uh, we could have helped them, got whatever equipment they needed, and left this kid laying here in the field.
To go back to get their material, am I correct?
And if I'm, I mean, we're, uh, CPR first aid training, and once the highest level of care reaches the patient, not supposed to leave. Am I correct with that, Mr. Gellman?
It is yours.
Okay. Uh, eleven fourteen, UMS requests the fire department lifting assistance three AM in the morning. Upon arrival of the fire department, uh, they, uh, they got in the, the house. The guy really, they didn't really need lifting assistance, but only one of the crew members actually assisting getting the patient to the ambulance. I mean, they called us out at three AM in the morning, not that we cared to go, but we'd at least like to have the full crew helping us out with it. Uh, then there was an issue on the eleven eighteen of this year, uh, where one vehicle rear ended another vehicle right in the city of Jackson. Uh, female subject complained of leg pain and foot pain. Uh, they got, they got the patient out of the vehicle, uh, made her walk to the ambulance and made her step up in the ambulance. Uh, I witnessed that one myself.
Can I stop you?
Yes, sir, you can.
I started at eleven twenty-five. Please, please email me every one of those.
Okay.
Every one of those incidents?
I can.
To say that I'm angry is, okay, that shouldn't have happened at all. I, uh, I'm mad, that should not happen.
Well, I think of how we do.
If it's by people, then.
We're out there trying to, trying to help people. I mean, most of our agency, the Jackson Fire Department is paid, and we've got six paid staff, and most of them volunteers. So, I mean, we're guys that's out there doing this for free, and all we want to do is help our community.
That's the reason I wanted you to address.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I will say that I asked Chase, the wreck that happened on Charlotte one hill, he said he was involved and he went much better. Am I correct, Chase?
If he go there.
I can take, I can take no credit for that because I went up there just to see what happened. And by the time I got there, they had already get the guy out, so. Yeah, they did break out.
Yeah, and he did say that you were wrong saying, and he went much better.
But yes, I'd like to.
I, I will for these two, there is two.
No, I'm pretty angry at this.
That, that I was, well, you're gonna really get angry on this last one. Uh, uh, we've, uh, we also had one in which I mentioned the last fiscal board meeting where the fire department was paged out because Red Bull had, so they had one truck available and didn't want to, uh, use it on lifting assistance call. The fire department responds out there, finds a guy bleeding from the mouth from where he failed. It's complaining of hip pain. My guys ain't gonna touch him. We're not, I mean, we're not gonna do any more harm than what's already done. The last one here.
All right, can I stop you there?
Yes, you can.
So who did they respond?
Watts Kane responded and picked the patient up.
Which was the timeframe of how much time elapsed with this gentleman laying there?
Oh, twenty-five minutes. Twenty-five minutes.
See, now that's what makes me angry. Is look at a patient there and they can help, but we're, we refuse to help him.
And then here, the last one.
That's, that's, yeah, that's totally.
Yes, this is the last one. Uh, on, uh, November the twenty-sixth, while we were in the last fiscal board meeting, uh, we had a patient here on Lower Main Street and went down on a stroke. Fire department units were close, uh, they decided to try to run by and help because they hear the patient, uh, had quit, uh, quit riding. Uh, so they arrive on scene, EMS had already got there. So they've been there, the patient's been down for roughly five minutes, and the medic pronounces him deceased. Uh, no CPR was done, patient was still on the couch. Uh, I mean, guys, I, I don't mean to, to be negative because I, I try to be very positive as anything, but we have got to fix this. We've got it right there in that alone, and that's three people passing away. I mean, what if that's us involved?
Absolutely.
What if that's some of our family?
You, you were a member? Any of them?
That's the reason I'm going, I told you. That's not a one, that's a race.
That way I've been on company.
If I can email from you, I can email that.
If this is to make this thing together, to bring in the people that are supposed to be.
Oh, no, it's not. No, it's not. I ain't making.
We have a wide deal, somebody should have called us over.
That's why, that's why.
I've been there since October. But somebody should call, say, hey, this happened, and you need to feed.
No, I actually had addressed some with Jerry before, did I not, Jerry?
Yeah, we clear.
And, and you probably documented my loss.
You've got to communicate Chase as, as emergency director. He needs, he should not email you or notify you.
He should know.
Uh, I don't, I don't, I didn't know he was a director down there because these guys never visited the fire department and say, hey, we're the ambulance service, hey, can we work together? The only time that that's ever happened was on that wreck on the thirty, and Mr. Gellman talked to the assistant chief and said, I want to work with you all. And the guys, I mean, I'm here for the county, that's, that's all I'm here for, is to make things better. I'm not here to make anybody look bad.
But you gotta communicate.
And that's what I'm insisting, we've got to have meetings to sort of come in together and make this thing work.
Did you communicate with anybody?
I have not, no.
With nobody?
No.
Well, it's gonna start down, so.
Because I didn't know who to communicate with, talking about those relationships.
And we're not, and we're not putting you all down on it.
We were in the newspaper, we're on the radio station, we had put our name out, we, we are incoming, we're people coming, we don't know who we've talked to. We don't, I, I didn't know, I don't know you. You know, I mean, you all community fire people are all together, you know, I mean, we don't know. We've been just trying to fix and clean up what we, I purchased with, you know, on the arrow that, uh, uh, Steve was not that bad. But, uh.
And Jerry, this is the gentleman that Fudd recommended you take the training with. He said that would help, right, and this is Chase, this is the young man that.
And, you know, I mean, being honest with you, if I was trying to dog somebody or try to put somebody out, you all would have been on the front page of the newspaper when my ambulance pushed, uh, your ambulance out the road because it ran out of gas underneath intersection. But I didn't bring that up.
All right. Court members.
Well, I mean, I was, but I mean, that happened weeks ago, that was never.
But that didn't cause a patient to lose his life, I know.
That good?
They, they were angry.
Well, my knee.
But, I mean, I, we're not gonna go into very details, but we wanted to address you all. That's what I'm gonna have to make my call parties with, this guy's, so if there is issues, then we need to clarify quickly. So if it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, this, some of this is four, five months old, but, uh.
But from now on, you will, when I hear about this, or before Chase will let you know, then let me.
Yeah.
Because I'm not so good at this.
But I go by somebody.
That's what I'm saying, everybody's gonna work together like that. That is something valuable. What do we, we need to do, or whatever did you do?
Well, in all reality, you all should have moved it. I mean, you don't really should. I mean, that should be an effort, I mean, that's, that's why I need to work with the owner and all the.
That may speak traditionally, I think everybody pretty much made their, made their voice heard. Uh, main thing I consider, everybody's all a citizen with a county. Just looking at notes that I took here, would like to remember I'm a part of, uh, one ambulance service that don't want to own, I don't want to call it shit. Uh, don't want to do no wicked thing. And I hear somebody say a third is a county, I say Watts, and I, and I live there, so I don't want to watch volunteer for being ten percent of the county.
No.
Uh, I know, I know we, I want to see everybody survive, but I can't just leave another new car to eat and let it watch this spin. There are no way in the world that they can make it quick and people, just, uh, not, not getting some call, but I think y'all need to sit down and come up with an agreement of, uh, either shake, take a turn about on the call, or, or at least, I mean, y'all got all of them. You get ninety percent of Red County and a hundred percent of Wolf County. Uh, and I don't see how Watts can provide that service and employ anybody, I know they're not necessarily getting a lot to make the money, but they've got to pay their employees, you know, one of their gods. I do think y'all need to sit down and, uh, come to an agreement, and I don't see no way in the world that agreement can be made that say you can have ten percent of the call, but have one hundred percent of the cost, and that's just going to apply, um, to ambulance services. And I understand you all. And again, that's why when I talk to, uh, Fanny, Tony, and we try to check in with this, where you find this stuff, kind of, we need to. Because I've been here, I know when we had our own ambulance service, had private people coming in, with a train, calling Steve, and then Arrow, it's been, it's never been, uh, a problem. Well, it makes us a problem, it's always been harder than I guess. And I, and I went to town and I'm meeting you a while back, and I did talk to Fudd, and I talked to you more that time, that you didn't, and he didn't kind of say labor, but you had just gotten caught up like that week, and I hadn't talked to y'all since. You know, I do think you've come to some kind of agreement that will benefit the county, benefit y'all in other, it'd be some kind of mutual agreement.
And, and we're open, Judge, we're open to suggestions. I mean, we, we just want to serve, you know, our fire district and, and the rest of the county, that, that's it. And, you know, and, and I think, uh, Jerry and the guys, just that they could survive on half a thousand, one call, or half a hundred, if that's worth it. But we, we would, we would be just fine with that.
And they come and they just call it out on tough and not talking to them, you know, to me, that's kind of not the first thing for a leader. As Jerry been saying, I don't, um, don't think we're upset, but, uh, let's move on. I'd also like to encourage y'all to get together, uh, with Lady Fudd, uh, for my coordinator. I'd like to say, but it needs to be sort of mutual, something.
I'm gonna meet with Fudd and then, uh, first week, I'll go back to you. Always go back to your one day. We'll, we'll comment to you, okay? You are setting up being.
Yes. So it'll be a decision being made by the court, I would rather that y'all just do what you're doing, or sit down and talk about it, get to you, Tim.
One, one more quick thing, Jim. In the interim, how can we work it so we are serving our, our district?
Well, that's the reason I said, this is gonna be a trial. I'm gonna text you all.
Yeah.
And see if I respond for you all to help in that area.
Yeah, if we get, if we're getting calls down in there, and if it's a everyday text, hey, we didn't get on calls down here last night, and I look at.
That's an issue.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, can you go.
Still are going with it.
Can you all be on the radio and just.
Sure.
We listen, we listen all the time, we just haven't had the, the need to.
Be on.
To get it out.
And Tim, if, if you're, if there isn't a call on the phone call in that area, and they don't respond out, let me know. Because I'll be calling Greg, or I'll call Terry, he's in one, so please.
We need it to be on the radio, and that way they won't be able to say, or, my guys won't be able to say, well, we didn't do this because this.
Right, you all.
Right.
You've been there for so long.
So, so what would, what are you suggesting we do exactly, so I'm clear?
Well, if there's a call on Watts Fire Department District.
Okay.
Then I expect.
Get on the radio.
Then let me say, listen, we're in Jackson, can you respond to this call?
I still want to start a truck your way.
Exactly.
And I still want to start a truck your way, but they should be calling or holding on the rail or something to you guys saying, hey, here's this address.
Right. And, and we know roughly where probably ninety percent of the addresses are.
Yes, don't, don't see it like you're gonna contact them, get a one and round.
So, so is it, so is it okay then, if we pick up the radio and say, that's our fire district, we'll take care of it? Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're calling that, and, and we're, we're hearing that, and you're canceling our truck, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Chris, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. And that way, you know, we ain't sending the truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that way, because the next one might be a family, we, you know.
Yeah. Now, if it, if it's a, if it's a full-blown code or something, we may have you guys come up and get.
Or red.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what I.
Hey, if both of them is on the same, um, have either both of them is a third or if not, neither one at all. Or no, like, to like. Absolutely. But I know, I mean, I'm like, we might get, because, yeah, our citizens is mine, a mine thing.
I, I, I come to town and I'll tell all my people, you do want to rock with the patient, it'll work out in the end.
Absolutely.
It will, bud. It may not work out today, but it'll work out in the end, so. He's known that I'll have a patient here.
So, uh, you know, when you contact me back, after you, after you all talk, we will set up a meeting when you talk to Fudd.
I will call you.
And I will be doing a trial.
I'll call, I'll call you morning.
Okay, so, uh, y'all pretty much got to figure that, is that where you want to be going with this, what you're doing, and we get together and have a meeting.
Yeah, we, I, I'll come to you, Jeff, on, on any set up, I may.
Sounds good.
But I do appreciate y'all being interested in Red County.
Yeah, thank you both.
And I think tremendous, uh, listen, we in the house, uh, to lay the services on the county, but, uh, we're gonna have to. All right, thank y'all for coming. Okay, next thing on the end, the consideration and approval to adopt. GNC magistrate secretary, I'll put it there, into the county road.
I might motion to adopt GNC back this year.
Okay, I'll, I'll. Royder has made a motion, but no second, but if you're wanting to take off GNC magistrate secretary completely. Royder made a motion. I don't believe on my. But, but do we have a second? Oh, Royder. Well, I'm ready, well, I'm ready to talk to the county road, I did say the motion, but if we don't have a second, do we have a second? Okay, we don't have a second.
I made a motion to, uh, GNC back to the cemetery. Oh. Right, one second.
Okay, you're taking Clear Lane, Boomer Lane, Plum Creek Road off the, and adding GNC.
GNC's all right. That's my motion.
Donnie Bush has made a motion to adopt GNC magistrate secretary home, and who's saying that?
I did.
Okay, Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Royder. Ray Moore.
Uh.
He was injured.
Uh.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up the discussion, what's the problem adopting Boomer Lane? We got a problem there. We got two houses in the cemetery over there.
Is it, is it legal?
Everyone, it is legal, everyone, I don't allow them to put on the dinner. If any, if any, if any of them has got any questions, it would be the ones to adopt it in. How many, how many people y'all been over there?
By the way.
It got a bridge that probably fifty foot long, and it fell.
GNC's back to them. Two feet foot long.
Any bridges they got long?
GNC.
If it's not a good fifty foot or good forty.
It'll be the foot.
I'm not major, so I can't say, I'm not gonna.
And they put a truck in it, and it. And they put a truck in it, and...
There's a truck in it, and it's fell down, and the poor little woman, she can't even get water, they can't have Christmas over there, they can't have nothing. And she takes care of a nine-year-old woman. There is a cemetery behind that house. You could ask Ken's wife, he's even worked on it. So, there's a cemetery, there's a...
It's legal.
What else? It is legal.
I didn't say it wasn't legal. As if I had any question.
You said you had a problem with...
No, 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 no.
What you saying?
Yeah. So I mean, y'all already adopted this one in, GNC magistrate secretary.
There's one important that needs to be done, that one there.
That's the one, that one's there.
She hit my bridge.
It's in violation of law.
And I ain't going to...
I'm just going to get in and out pretty easy.
I went over to her house, y'all been to her house? Have y'all been over to her house?
Yes, I have.
It's bad, I mean, gee, the... They've got a bridge that's about forty foot long, or at least thirty, or fifty.
It's got a truck.
In the center of it. In the center of it, yeah.
So what's the next one?
I just want to know why you don't want to adopt Boomer Lane then?
Then you got Clay Lane, right?
No, I just want to just, well, I want to adopt the Boomer Lane then. It's got two houses, done cemetery in it. So what, and it's legal. We've already done first, first adoption, and done it here.
It's as important as the rest of these, but I'm sure...
I think, I think they're all important.
I know they're all important, but I'm sure whichever one's adopted, some of these probably won't be a one bill, it might be a year from now.
You already, you've already used the bridge fund money, so whatever we do is going to have to be done out of county road plan. I'm not going to rock with it, rock with it.
Well, GNC magistrate, that one's better.
We, we, that done deal, that...
These other roads does not, they can't get to their access, and I know we get more money from more roads we adopt. But right now, Judge, we ain't, we can't get one for God.
Here, I understand that. We, GNC magistrate cemetery is adopted in, y'all already done. I'm just going to know what kind of problem you got with Boomer Lane. Been with it for a big month, big month, probably three months.
Just to review, Bridget's been over the office this morning, we've got, she's got the double checklist that we had now as far as adopting roads and stuff like that, so. Want to have some clarification, we can, they can be shown with you guys, where we're at in the process of adopting those roads. I had four before, when you go through about the seven steps of adopting the county road, and you check those off and show me, so that you know where we're staying as far as each road.
And we've also got, I think it's ten bridges, they've all blown today, that's eighty points.
I don't want to say ten, I mean...
Eight, whatever they want. Eight or nine.
But actually, GNC, it's a done deal, and it needs help. I just want to know, I'm right up in discussion, what's wrong with Boomer Lane? Have y'all been to their place? Have you been over to that? It's turtle, they might turtle their house, they've been to the cemetery. No, it's far away, it's too far away, on the main road. And the guy on the big bridge right above it, where they busted him in years ago, that if it busts it up, they won't have no road, and if it does bust out, we can't picture we won't get paid for it.
I don't have a problem with a bridge, but to me, the ones that we voted in or we done first.
Now, Boomer Lane?
Boomer Lane is just a drive...
It's just a driveway, it's not a bridge.
Got no problem with that, but we can keep bringing that up, just like we're doing these, these been on the list, huh? Clay Lane.
Uh, GNC might be on it.
My opinion, there's nothing wrong with that road, or that bridge, or nothing else.
I got no problem, who turned that in to adopt it in?
I don't have a clue.
Ken Beck.
Ken Beck.
Ken Beck.
And I think it's got a bridge on it that the county, I understand, don't...
It's got a bridge on it, and when I looked at it, they, they're saying, oh, it's...
I looked at it, too.
All that was wood, wasn't for us to be able to clean that bridge off, Ellis, when it closed and stuff, that's what Ken's life is served with, because his brother also lives out there.
Okay.
The old bridge is off.
Ken, that look, it's not adopted either, that's what, that's what he said, that's why Ken Beck, and then asked us to adopt it.
Okay, Plum Creek Road, what's the problem with adopting it in?
They got no problem with the bridge off, that's all it is. I do have a problem with building a bridge.
It's got to be adopted in, because I've got workers that get on, get off the county road, and call the police department, they have a home property property, so it is a problem. And we can't do it.
You got workers calling that one?
You heard me, you heard me, but anyway.
Yeah, I understand the record, in order to expend county resources under oath, it must be on county roads.
I agree, I understand.
But he just, he just accused that worker of calling him and breaking him off. I didn't know what you said.
I ain't accusing, I was told that by office.
He was told that, okay. But you said, hey, you had workers...
Hey, cut it out, Greg, I'm going to have you be taken out of here, we trying to get this, and all we doing is...
Yeah, don't make me say...
You run your mouth, no, you run your mouth, and let's move on. Discussion and wean draw. This is the road?
Wean draw is complete. I had it looking yesterday, and she signed the, she signed the deed, we've done a complete county road all the way through.
So we need to do now, we have a measure by John Chester and...
He's already been made, he's John Chester out there.
So you got land, what's the next one?
But basically, there you go. I did think, it begins with the GPS measurement, but at our boundary line, it goes to the... Now, the one thing that you guys do need to address, I spent about an hour with this pleasure yesterday, explaining on this to her. The statute says there's a thirty-foot wide right away, okay? That's what I put in the deed. She was a little concerned about that, because that takes in her barn and all sorts of stuff, and rightly so, she was concerned about that. And I told her I would address that with the court, and if we needed to amend that easement, it'd make it fifteen feet, sixteen feet, whatever. I couldn't do that myself, because I talked...
Did you call her and tell her to...
I don't have her.
Okay, if they go up there, and they, they put a rule, like you said, it's in that woman's barn, they're going to have issues, I can tell you right now. She's going to run you out, but we're going up there.
Well, she's fine, Brian.
That's why we're going to do sixteen foot on...
Sixteen?
We're going to do six, we're going to mend it, all the sixteen foot wide, that's all we need to grant the road.
Better make sure that she know what you're doing, or else it makes you run you out.
We're even talking to her, if she don't have that.
Brandon, you got that on the... He got that done on the blue one? So, Brandon, yeah, Wes, look. Okay. Thank you for getting that took care of, we got that was a problem before, and...
Well, I just didn't want to have to do that confirmation action, thank you for much of your time and resources, and we have to work that out.
Okay, thank you for that. The next thing, consideration and approval agreement between Commonwealth and Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the Department of...
Judge, I'd interrupt you, but we'll need a motion on wean draw, because the last motion that was made was to only adopt the first three hundred and thirty feet in.
Okay, that's why I asked you if you had to win.
Yeah, okay.
Just make sure we follow that, that we got public hearing and everything, that's some time in the past, we just want to follow that with the advertising.
Sure.
We got, you know, we, over my career in the past, we had tons of issues of people, and that's the reason we tried to create a file on every new road that, that is taken in, and we have the checklist of when we had a public hearing, when we advertised, and all that sort of stuff. But if one of those items is not taken care of, and we have an issue, and they'll sure bring it to the front, when they don't want, when they want to block the road.
Brandon, if the first public hearing was just for that three hundred some feet, we probably need to have a new one to cover that.
You've already, you've already got permission to use it right now, but if they're formally available on the county road system totally, you probably just need to...
Completely, we fix the road again.
She's giving her permission, and it specifically says, in that document, she gives us permission for it.
Okay, so she gives a way, we'll come back and do whatever we need to have a public hearing, or whatever on the... Okay, consideration and approval agreement between Commonwealth and Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the Department of Blue and... Eighty, in Redding County, eighty twenty bridge agreement. And this is GNC in, and Craig Woodchase approved it, and... So do we have a motion on approving eighty twenty bridge agreement?
Motion, say.
Make more motion. Royder, Ray Moore, Els Center. The Els Center, seventy three.
Yeah, does that take in the resolution, though, with the two?
Uh, we can, we can, we can actually just say the name, consideration and approval of the final resolution related to House Bill Two, no...
There's a resolution with eighty, we're going to bring it to the...
We just have a vote on...
It's a name, there's got to be a vote on the resolution, so they bring it...
Calling that, whatever, they want to have a green vote, so...
We're good on here. Uh, consideration and approval of Watts' driving resolution related to House Bill Two, under L G D E D, Els Co. Service Project. And we could have put the mail on there.
Two eight four thousand, that aren't very bad off.
And this is, again, if I'm remembering correctly, the day I came in here, we got a bill under pen, and we got plenty of things that we could use this two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars on to move the county forward, but we're going to have to use it also for housing inmates, so. But at least they got a place to be, and so we can have a motion to approve that.
All right, Judge, we're operating without a contract.
We ever been without a contract, about three months, I talked to two other county, we got one county right now, but I had, we got a, went back from three boards. Transportation may be a little hard, we may have to end up playing one in, in one, unless we've got a contract, maybe four months.
And the...
So we have a motion, a motion. Royder, Ray Moore, you okay? All right, the next time Danny, if you ever come, I'll put you on top again, and I hope you get in here and get out pretty quick, but Danny Crowe, he's from the Harp Enterprises Lexic Services, and he wanted to come up and look at, let y'all see when he comes off in here. I know we're currently, and I didn't write on here, that G, G C, G N.
G C.
Mickey was concerned about the price that we've been paying, and Danny's here to speak on behalf of Harp, and again, I appreciate you coming, and being patient with me.
Sure, appreciate the opportunity to talk, and I want to give y'all the abbreviated edition, just using about our presentations. So I'll run this pretty quickly, and if you guys have questions, you can ask me about it. I am from Harp Enterprises, we've been in Kentucky for forty-six years, some local experience here. We started out as a printing company forty-six years ago, printing T-shirts and that type of thing. We no longer do much of that commercial printing anymore, most of the printing we do is for election-related services. We print absentee ballots, election day ballots, and such type of thing. Harp Enterprises is the manufacturer of these voting machines, we work with them, you'll notice, their name is on all the equipment, so it's Harp and Harp. No relationship there, but they have been in business for over a hundred years as well, so a lot of experience with manufacturing those machines. This is newest, what we call the very system, voting system. It's going to be quite, this would be quite a switch for you guys, because you are using all electronic equipment right now, and this is an all paper-based machine. So everybody will be voting on paper ballots. And that is a big push from the state of Kentucky to go to where everybody has a paper trail. So they could audit those ballot records and, you know, pull those out and hand out those if we needed to. So it is a big push, we're actually not allowed to sell new equipment that is electronic machines. So anything purchased in Kentucky has to be a paper-based system. Uh, this is the newest machine on the market, you know, there are some competitors out there, including your current vendor, but ours is the newest, latest technology. This is built from the ground up, so we can load this crap, previous software, hardware, start it fresh, so that that reset the supply chain. And, you know, parts can be available for this for, you know, ten to fifteen years from now, so you don't have to worry about replacing that again. Uh, just want to talk real quickly about, I've got, you guys have a copy of this in here, you realize I'm just giving quite a bit of it. But we are a full-service company, we do ballot layout, so I work with your county clerk's office, and getting those names from Secretary of State, from your local officials here, that go on a ballot. That would actually be me directly, we have a proofreading department that double checks, triple checks everything. We actually require you to send in those name sheets, that the candidates actually file and write their names on. So that we can double check those, make sure they're accurate, we're not just going to take that information, you give us a throwdown machine, and then if something's wrong, we're going to charge and redo it. We want to make sure it's right the first time, too. Software database protection, that's something I used to do, this is my first year in this, this role, so for eighteen years I was a computer nerd, and then now all of a sudden I'm a seller person. So that's a pretty big switch for me, but we do actually program the cards and go in these machines, that store the votes, that show the election on the machine. One big advantage of using a company like us is that we are local, and so when we program those cards, we basically bring those out to your county, and put those in the machine, lock and seal those. So you don't have to get those in the mail and wait for, you know, a week or two weeks for somebody to come and set those machines for you. Same thing with paper ballots, we print all paper ballots in our office, and I will hand deliver those to you, so that those aren't dropped by UPS. You won't have to worry about those being lost in the mail, that type of thing. We do the voting machine setting, like I said, our guys come out, take care of all the setting for you, you would get one bill from us instead of from multiple vendors. And we do provide coworker training, that would be very important, if you decide to purchase new equipment that is all paper-based, because that would be a big switch for your officials as well as your coworkers. So we do that coworker training for you. Election day service, you would have somebody here in your county from our office, basically another hand to work with the equipment, any issues that you might have on election day. And then, of course, post-file up election, after the election, I'll talk to you guys to see what we can do to make, make things run smoother. Harp advantages, so again, in-state customer service, there's not going to be another vendor that's going to be able to beat us on customer service, I'm very confident on that. Uh, we'll walk through the equipment in a minute, and we'll show you why, you know, we're superior equipment as well. And then the third thing that is important to you guys for making a choice is obviously the price. Usually that's the first thing that comes up, and that's where I want to talk about, where we, where I think, I've not seen yours build, but I think we could be competitive with us. We do not charge hardware and software fees, so competitors will a lot of times charge those fees to you annually, even if you're not using that equipment. So as you all know, Kentucky, every fourth year is an off year for elections, you're still paying those hardware, software fees, just to have that equipment sit here. And there's actually a bush, I've heard, you know, it's been brought up a couple of times and shut down, but alternating elections every other year in Kentucky. So if that were to ever happen, then you would have two years of your equipment just sitting around where you were paying those hardware and software fees. So you would never incur that from us. Also, maintenance contracts are sold with equipment a lot of times, and you're paying that annually, whether it's, whether it's brokered or not. We operate on rate fix, especially if you're purchasing new equipment, it's not something you're going to want to pay a contract for if you're not using that, especially on new equipment. So we would never charge anything unless...
I'm right, I've seen, I've been to go check these.
Uh, we actually come out and examine that equipment for you typically four times a year in an election year, and that, the time we come out to check things, it's actually just for us, we're not going to charge you for that. We actually come out, we can go ahead and do some paperwork on this equipment, the sale numbers, that type of thing on here, that saves us time when it comes time to come back the second time to have to set those machines. So most of the rest of this presentation is actually about the features of voting equipment, and again, I want to cover this real quickly, with you guys, if you can ask me questions. Voter transparency and equality, that's something that sets us apart from a competitor. This is a paper ballot, so let me just go over the two systems that we have here. This is one system, but this is three pieces of equipment. This is a handicap assessment device, so this would be used for any voter that's sight impaired or in a wheelchair. You'll notice, both of these machines sit down pretty low to the ground, that's on purpose, so that somebody can come up to a wheelchair, be eye level with this screen, and be able to work with that equipment. That ballot that prints off this machine looks like this. A ballot that everybody else is going to be voting on is going to look like this, it's the same, actually, this is torn off. So as you see, there's no difference in those two ballots, same size, same shape, when that gets scanned into this ballot box at the end of the night. Competitors are going to print out the summary card, something like this, from that handicap assessment machine, and it's going to have their voter choices on here, and then that's going to get scanned into that computer. So at the end of the night, or even while they're voting, you know, there's a question, it's, why, why am I voting on a different sheet of paper than everybody else? So that's something that sets us apart. One other thing that is barcodes, our machines do not read votes from barcodes. It actually uses a triangulation technology to actually read the voter choices in the boxes as they're being marked. Competitors are actually going to use barcodes to read those voter choices at the end of the night. As I mentioned, it prints off the summary card, it's going to have their names listed here, so voters are going to be able to say, oh, yeah, I voted for this person. But when they scan that ballot in, it is a reading of that summary card, it's reading votes from a barcode, and that's a big national thing you can find right now, as far as I can go with barcodes. So real quick, I'll just walk you through its origins, this machine actually, during the demo, gets the most attention, but it's actually going to be the least used. We already have some guys in Kentucky that purchased this, and it was designed for an ADA voter with a sight impaired or a wheelchair, coworker... A poll worker would get this machine ready for the voter to use, they're gonna have to put in the password, set, activate the ballot. And you're gonna notice here, I had just demo here, that this machine actually has the capability to put multiple precincts on this machine. So, and for, and you're only required to have one of these per polling location. So if you guys have like a school or something like that, where you can combine, uh, precincts into one location, you would only need one of these devices to accommodate a handicap voter. Again, it's probably not even gonna get used that much, so you're not wasting money on extra equipment that you don't need. So you would pick the ballot that the voter gets, and this is where you can turn it over to the voter. So the voter would come up, you notice it also has this to accommodate a handicap voter. This can actually come out, sit in their lap, they can use this switch to vote, uh, to go through the choices with the help button, select button. It also has a place where you can plug headphones, a sip and pump device. I'm gonna use the touchscreen. So the voter would go ahead and start beginning voting, and as you notice, it is a touchscreen, or as I said, you can use this to vote. Again, it's designed for someone who's sight impaired, so each individual office, it puts one on there at a time, so that it's easy for them to see, be able to read, it uses plain English to explain to the voter, uh, you know, how their, the instructions on how to vote. If you can see, it's also got a number one here to vote for one. It counts down to let the voter know how many choices that they have left. So your voters are probably pretty familiar with this anyway, this is electronic equipment. So I'm just gonna skip through it. We'll get to a race that has like a vote for, city council race. So here's a city council race, you see vote for four, uh, it'll count down the number of choices that they have left. You can go right in on here. So once the voter has made all their choices, they have the option, actually they're forced to a summary screen. And it's gonna say, these are the choices that you made, are you sure you wish to print these? Yeah, it's on the printer. It's gonna make them confirm that they wanna print the ballot. And my printer fell asleep, so it's gonna take just a minute for it to warm up. But it will print out the ballot, but it looks, you know, just like this, pre-marked. This is just a ballot marking device, it's not a voting machine, it doesn't store any votes. All your votes at the end of the night are stored in this, in this machine, in this paper ballot. So move over to this one real quick. So at this point, voter would come up to this machine and scan ballots in. Now, the biggest thing that you guys would have over paper ballots as opposed to electronic equipment, now you probably only got two machines per precinct, is that right, like electronic? So especially during a rush, like a morning rush, a lunch rush, an afternoon lunch, where you got ten, fifteen people coming in at once, uh, you've only got two people that can vote at one time, currently. Now that you have paper, this scanner, everybody's gonna be scanning these ballots into the scanner. If you notice, it's gonna take four to five seconds, is all it takes. You can have as many stations set up around the room, privacy booths as you want. So you can have ten voters over here voting at one time, all they're doing is scanning ballots in. So lines on election day, it's pretty much gonna eliminate lines for people waiting on food and trouble. Uh, just a couple more features, you'll see some landing lights here, just some technology to let a voter know where they can scan that ballot in. Uh, this machine does have, both machines have battery backup that lasts no less than two hours. Uh, they're also very easy to switch out, they're just on the back of this unit. So we would just pop this out, put in a new battery, if, if it's something where we had to run on battery all day, we keep switching those batteries out. They are rechargeable, it's got the battery light down here. Uh, this box will hold four thousand ballots. It also has an emergency slot here that will hold several hundred ballots in case for some reason this machine did malfunction, and you weren't able to read ballots at all. Those ballots could be dropped in here, uh, until after the election, and the board can read those into a spare machine. Like I said, it's a pretty quick, brief overview. You guys have anybody have any questions for me about voting equipment? Uh, and I don't mind to come back another time if you guys want me to go into more detail, but I know time-wise, I'm checking pretty quick. Any questions? Uh, I have, Becky has talked with the state about funding for this. Uh, there is some money left over from a previous, uh, where the government released some money to buy voting equipment. There is some of that money still left over that Becky's talking with about possibly getting some funding to help purchase new equipment in the county.
And that would be something that we would do, or is that on Becky?
I would have to know if that was the interest, first of January, in state for the elections, and I would even know. And then I would have to fly this with the head.
Get the price from him and probably what we got him.
And if we just get one bill, we wouldn't be getting several.
Currently, we get two bills each election for two companies. We went with Harp, we would just get one bill to cut down some of the costs. How many counties do you guys?
Yeah, see, the, any state with elections, you are involved.
We currently do, we currently do service for ninety-six of the counties in Kentucky.
We're kind of, you know, we're kind of behind times, ninety-six counties go with them. We're kind of going to be forced slim to go with them, you know, changing everything. And while there's money, the first of the year, I talked to the state when we actually was down there, and he's willing to help me apply for, to try to help us get money, they helped us with it. And in the long run, it's gonna save us from what we're paying our bill.
And I'd have to come back sometime and sit down with the guys about annual billing, just making up, just to see how much we can say.
I'd say this thing could, like Becky, with you and with the prices together, and will she make any transfer bill?
Yeah, he said we could save money too, though, like some polling places, we wouldn't have to have two, we could just have one on the table and stuff.
Yeah, it would be less equipped overall for the county now. I mean, the more, and future-wise, the more you guys can combine, either precincts, I've talked with a couple of counties, and they're looking at redoing their precinct lines. And I know that sometimes can upset voters by getting rid of voter precincts, but consolidating precincts would save you more as well.
We kinda done that with, with Call, where that one burned, we...
And they're probably going to do, they're already free, if we're gonna show.
Yeah, we, we'd already saved on some of the equipment, because of that.
Yeah, so you would need, in that, in that instance, you would need three scanners, one for each precinct, and then just one of the...
Well, they would save us a lot of money, if they're like at one location.
How many precincts are there in there?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one? You're saying, you're having, just for example, now the eleven?
Yeah.
And we'll be saving the money on all these precinct workers of...
It would save us like, uh, on the machines, like if there are three precincts at one location, we would have to buy three of them.
Right.
Yeah.
Plus, you wouldn't have all these workers too, at these precincts.
Well, that would be combining precincts, which would be something that would have to be redrawn by the county.
But this is twenty, this is twenty twenty, the census is... The way I understand it, the year to redistrict, there's gonna be any of them, right?
It's right, so the same officers, you have to have four officers, so it's not gonna cut down on officers.
Okay, you'd still have, even, even though you, you set it down in eleven locations, you'd still have...
Like, 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 you have two, like, you have three, one, one eighty, yeah. So there you can, like, saw you can do a machine, and all of a sudden, voting at the same time, just be everything, and it'll be fine.
Bay County actually just committed to buy new equipment with us as well, and they're actually, they're a direct order, D R E, equipment, just like you guys now, they're all electronic. And so that's an issue that just lies, you know, at all places. Because they would have eight or ten machines, where you guys have just a couple, but still you're talking, you know, three hundred thousand registered voters. Uh, paper changes, changes that time that you're waiting on a lot, so...
So you can come back and we can...
Yeah, I'd like to sit down and just do the full presentation with you guys sometime.
Like, we're done, I know, I'm gonna get you here quick, you can't do that.
It's interesting to learn about the county, so I appreciate you guys.
We'll let Becky work, work with you, improve you, and then if you can, work with us and then we can improve you.
Okay. And if I, I'll, I'll stay out this door if you guys have some, uh, equipment, if that's not gonna be shared.
Thank you, Dave. See, you have to take under consideration approval to offer out the trade in the open Bay County, if there's some Bay County trust, don't be had. Rethan County fiscal board will be tied, Rethan County solid base plate. And this came about with the auditor being in here, and, uh, the other day somebody came in, I guess there was three people, they paid their bill, and one of the county workers came over, picked it up, and we just sent it over with them to, uh, to Waste Connection. And still taking money, and me taking money, using Mitch and Mitch used to bring it, and at the end of the day, the county doesn't want any of this. Good God, great, and it's Mitch's bill. So, we're gonna, we're gonna, Mitch is gonna collect, uh, whoever collects the money here will give to Mitch, and he will, well, he's not able to date, but, uh, he'll... And, uh, then he'll write you a check to Waste Connections with his great chief of health, Major, Major Wilson.
The only issue we'll have with this is that they're gonna collect the money. They're gonna call right then to horse, and has their, this person has tried me. So, because if people come in with their garbage cut off, if we give the money to Mitch, and then he takes it, and he's...
He still have to call them.
He's still running two weeks.
There's a lot of confusion, like that phone call from the people.
They're confused, right?
They're having on paper, one day it was paying all, just all bills, paying just officer, next, you're able to buy, pay the bill to Dick, and the bill to Dick is not available. All carpet, they're gonna be paying just officer, we need to clarify, and then make confusion, where people need to pay their bills, who?
Okay, but, uh, do we have a motion on open up the count for, uh, for Mitch to open up the count, and tell him, like, to put the money out? And to that, you know?
Who's, who's? Who's gonna collect it, man? Yours?
You want to play it?
Who's gonna collect the money?
It'd be paid here at the courthouse, a lot of people goes over to the waste, and then I told him, I said, we don't even have to take it, you're ready for something. They'll go over, really beyond the end, or they're gone, if they come over here. So the only way they're gonna pay it, pay it is at the waste collection station, uh, here at the courthouse. They can still mail it in, yeah, that won't change. That won't change, and the only thing, only thing what we collect will be law, the accomplishments they have. John, did you hear, pay trash bill, you can deal with same, uh, receipt number that's been paid, and then Mitch just gets the money, and he keeps it in, in the pocket.
They're not giving me money, Cal, when you're ready?
They used to.
Yeah, but... More?
Don't want any more money.
I don't know what's going on, nobody tells me anything anymore. I don't even get the reports from Waste Connections anymore, Donny.
Are, are you the coordinator down, Waste Coordinator at this school?
I thought I was.
You know nothing, you in the dark on all this?
I'm in the dark, the judge tells me nothing. And then the other day, just me... The other day, the auditors, the other day, the auditors called me asking, the other day, the auditors called me asking, now just a minute. You ask a question, he's talking about solid waste. Is the floor, is the floor not open? Okay, then I'll hush. No, I'm not. John, you wanna take me out?
You gonna have to...
I'm trying to carry me out, though, buddy. No, I'll sit down like a baby, if you want, if that son of a bitch is gonna treat me like a baby, then you all are gonna have to treat me like a baby. Now, get up. John, I'm ready to go.
Get up, get up.
I'm ready to go. I'm ready to go. Now enough is enough, John. Now listen here. Here, before you carry your camera down, now get up. Now, wait a minute, listen. Enough is enough, when is this shit gonna stop? Now, wait a minute. You talk about solid wastes, and I'm supposed to be the solid waste coordinator? Well, hearing that, John, you don't have to lose, look, look. Now, listen. Now, now, listen. I am supposed to be the solid waste coordinator, you're violating my first amendment rights, is this not right for me? Is solid waste not on the damn agenda?
Well, no, God, damn. Do we have a motion to approve, are we open up the count for the... We have a second.
That's it.
Donny Hood. Roy Darrell. Ray Moore. Ray Moore. Donkey.
Did I make the motion, or did I say it the way you did?
Everybody's gonna be buying, in our name.
I made the vote, not the way I'm saying it, right?
Okay, motion heard. Next thing, consideration approval to offer out the treatment to set up for revenue code seventy-seven dash forty-four, one thirteen, and appropriation code of number seventy-seven. That fifty-two fifteen, that's three sixty-six, which reports upon the President's office. Do we have a motion?
We're leaving that. Please, please.
We have a second.
Second.
Roy Darrell. Ray Moore. Donkey Hood. Donny Hood. Consideration approval to add approval code seventy-seven dash fifty-two fifteen dash three sixty-six, that ain't nothing in order. This is, uh, when Mitch can collect the money, he can write a check and send it to Waste Connection, and then down, have a board, we got it now.
Motion, hold the second.
Ray Moore. Donkey Hood. Donny Hood. Roy Darrell. Or consideration approval to release bid bonds to King Creek due to competi-, uh, due to competi-, completion for the test realm for FEMA, uh, fifty-four three fifty-eight, P W forty-seven, and P W four eighty-six.
Motion, second.
Ray Moore. Donkey Hood. Donny Hood. Roy Darrell. Okay, discussion of health insurance. Talk to K C O, all this stuff is winding down, and we're actually behind, even if we exempt out the state program, uh, we have to give a sixty-day notice. K C O would recommend then to just go ahead and keep the state program, if we wanna switch over to K C O, or don't make the price one change. Only thing is, right now, we're kinda binding, if I wanna take the best policy and add my family to it, I'm required to pay a certain amount. I think we all want to look at that, at Christmas money here. Just get some last operated camera, yeah? Okay.
I'll operate this camera.
I'll take it, it's on.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, what I would recommend on health insurance is ever avoid it the same policy. For now, if they choose to add, add on, uh, and have a calendar for them to do that, but I think we need for, for calls and, uh, learning me any way, it is, I think, if we provide insurance for one, it ought to be same for everybody. I don't think I would be able to get a better policy than you, just, um, the county's gonna pay more to it. Right now, right now, with whatever policy we got, I think it's thirty-nine dollars for Christmas, huh? That evening paycheck, and... Now, are you talking about state, the state insurance? Yeah. Right now, what, what's it averaging, around six hundred, or maybe some dollars? Seven hundred twenty-nine thirty-four. And then, how much? Seven twenty-nine thirty-four for, for a single plan. And then... Employee pays approximately eight. Eight. Each paycheck's thirty-nine dollars, I think, right? So what I, what I would like to do, to make it equal, fire across the board, everybody give that seven twenty-nine thirty-four policy if we're gonna provide insurance for one. To keep, to keep it equal. Okay, just like I explained to you when you first, uh, mentioned the insurance to me. State insurance, you can only charge what the handbook sites for employees, you cannot charge the employee more. You, you would step faster, but that's the way it is with the state program, if we take the same blue cross and blue shield policy through K C O, uh, we have to give a sixty-day notice to exempt out state program. How much would a premium cost for employee? He, he didn't bother getting that, God, he just, he just figured out if we can exempt that, we have to give a sixty-day notice, and he, he recommends just to keep what we've got. And you get a swift void during July, like with the fiscal year. But what I was saying, I, uh, what I'm bringing up, I think, I think we need to, uh, afford to pay seven twenty-nine thirty-four for each, uh, employee, and let them pay their pay, to still let them choose which policy to take. Okay, one benefit that we have with the state insurance versus Golden K C O, any...
Any state employee such as Becky Curtis and Gary, they can cross reference. If you go with the K-CO plan, you will, they will not be able to cross reference, they'll have to pack either a single plan versus a family plan.
And again, then again, I think the first thing to do is provide the same insurance for everybody, you know what I'm saying?
You're putting employees at a big expense. A large expense.
I'm, I'm looking at the taxpayers, not the, not the. Have, hurt employees.
The employees are fat, long. I, I could take that much.
I don't know how much it was K-CO.
Well, I don't know, I haven't seen the policies. But what I'm saying, like, an employee, Joel Ross, him and his wife, she's a, she's a teacher, they can cross reference, which helps them drastically on a family plan. Just like Becky, am I not right, Becky? Uh, Trish, I think that's the only one that's got family plans is cross reference.
But again, for the taxpayers, I don't think it's fair, they don't pay for any of that policy with my, with the family policy, maybe with the cat like policy, versus everybody having the same policy.
And, and it was just like when you was commissioner, you know, you packed the girls on your plan, therefore the fiscal, or planned a little more on your policy than they did on me as a single plan.
And, and looking, looking now at it, I, you know, say my plan was a thousand fifty dollars, yours was seven thirty-three, that's three hundred dollars that the taxpayers are paying, just because I'm wanting to pay their insurance. And I don't think that's fair to the ones who're paying their insurance. I mean, you think difference as far as? I don't know, all this time ran out, it's a guy that I'm talking to at K-CO, his mother died and then, I've gone two weeks later today, and he forgot to give me.
Judge, when does this have to be decided? Judge, I'm sorry, when does it have to be decided?
We just have to give us some delay on, we just, no, he said, "You can do it any month," but he said, "You have to give sixty day notice to the state that you're gonna exempt out that policy, that way my insurance won't last if we go with it."
Well, I think the first thing to do is get your numbers. Not just all look, sit down and look at it and see what's the difference.
I kind of, I kind of named that earlier, we hadn't known anything about it, and now it's too late to do anything about it. Ever what we got, we've got, if I've got the best policy, that's what's gonna be until, which we have got the state is allowed to pay extra amount of dollars.
Absolutely, just, you cannot make the employee pay it anymore, we're ending the matter right from there, did I not send you that code?
I did, I did. So, we get the number together and I just wanted to bring it up, bring it up to Florida, come January, they're entering ours. And I just wanna let you know that if the state decides until we get the number and decide whether we're gonna exempt that, we're gonna. We probably could've done it with the state earlier too, to say, "Hey, we want these policies, but people are already doing, they're gonna roll in and, and fill," like I say, I kept wondering why we didn't get back, but I didn't realize that.
Well, I will speak on behalf of the employees, I don't have the insurance with the county, I've got it for Billy.
We got several, got two.
The employees' benefits are, were, were, were more, weren't they?
Yeah, I'm not saying that at all, I just think if taxpayers are gonna pay your policy, we all have the same policy.
Yeah, but you're just, you're just putting employees at a, at a bigger expense, is what I'm saying.
Kinda, yeah, but the taxpayers wanna be paying it, and I, and I mean, I'm often taking care of employees, I mean, it's not bad.
You don't have to, you don't have to lease and the other stuff to help your employees.
If you ain't got your employees, you're not getting tax pay.
I'm not, I'm, I'm saying, and I'm not saying that at all.
And I ain't got to count healthy stuff, I'm just saying for the employees' sake.
And I've got some regular basic one with everybody else, you got, but if I talk, if I chose to take the best one, taxpayers should have to pay it.
A certain percent.
Okay, but I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, we're gonna hold on, I just wanted to bring it up in court, we're gonna do that only, then I'll give, uh, Crystal and Kathy will get the fill up in the K-CO, then we try to get some right, it may be a lot higher a couple of ways, I don't know. Okay, consideration of motion to pay Southern Woods heating including an amount of forty-nine hundred dollars, upon completed work of the, of Jailer and office. Um, what, what the deal with on this, uh, they got a price together, I got three or four quotes, I think I got four quotes. Uh, in the corner office center, they usually little plug-in heaters and Jailer, uh, they've got these water cool things and heat, uh, they got no heat on stage, they usually plug-in heaters. He was willing to do it, but he wouldn't do it until he seen a check was actually made up to him and signed, and it was the same way with the net closer, where he wanted to see the, see if he was gonna get paid when, when he got the work done and something. Uh, this is for Jeremy Southwood, the boy's name and.
So, Southwood instead of Southern, man says Southern, or Southern Woods?
No, that's, I think that's the name of his company, Southern Wood Heating and Coolers.
Oh, that's, oh. But it's, but it's Junior Southwood.
Junior Southwood. Jerry Andrew, yeah, his dad and son. So, I just give a motion to pay him when he gives the work completed, he's probably ready to start whenever I tell him when he's ordered.
Did you, did you bid that or did you just come up with that?
No, we bid it in. Actually, uh, actually, the next bitter toaster was fugits, when we were just doing the corner office, that you can buy another exchanger at Bunkie Tunnagee and take in the Jailer office, uh, Jailer office as well. It's the same size, it's just one bigger, uh, the other guy was around two hundred dollars cheaper just in the corner, but when you added that up, when they added, uh, Jailer bill, bring it to, the end of the day, I'm gonna hire.
If I'm understanding this right, you put one unit in, but you're putting the ductwork into the?
No, 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 it's a unit that sits outside and it's a ductwork and he's running it from control. It's easy, it's two, I call it two.
You put, you put two units in, one in the corner, one in the Jailer.
It'd just be one unit, I think, with three Jailer.
They wear bug blood.
Work both offices, right?
Yeah, yeah.
One unit with, that's what it's like.
Yeah, outside, just be one outside and you have three units around.
Hope so, that's one outside unit. Yeah, yeah, one unit.
But one unit outside, three units.
But there's still ducts, they use three units.
It's ducts, yeah, don't run no ducts.
I'm proud of that, I've now just wondered how you get, eat the two different offices.
Yeah, it's separate, look, it's around on the wall. Don't ask me, I don't know.
I mean, did you, did you, I said, you have a few holes.
It's, it's ducted, it's called ducts.
Yeah, I know, and I seen that, you can put one in on the wall there.
Yeah, you put one in here, for example, and I run it to run control, I put one of my.
And you can get over here in this unit.
It's ducts, it's ducts.
They just runs off of your lines, they also go off your lines, you got one outside, you set, the connections you get outside.
Yeah.
And it can, it just runs off, you got, you're gonna hear it, you're gonna hear it, run off the same outside unit, they just put the lines together, cool the lines, honey.
The cool lines.
I have those in my office, I hated them. They do not cool the heat good, and I had to get rid of them. And we had the set, you can run, I think, two off one of the outsides or something, I had it through the mission office, they were awful.
Does only, does only go for kind of years, we got in there, we ran twelve thousand dollars to.
Yeah, I mean, it may work better there.
But I, I don't see, I don't see us going that way. Here's the heat pump on it.
Yeah, it is.
But what I'm saying is, how does the heat?
It's just that one unit.
It don't go from one roof to the other.
No.
That unit there just works issue and, I know it gotta be on, but it's like the other one's gonna be on.
The house is full there.
From the thing on the wall.
It's coming to the line. It's just like you got one over here in his office, you got one right at office, you got one there, and you got one outside of you, and you got all the lines running to this one outside unit. It's like, it's like, it's like.
But it's only coming from that one.
One unit outside. The lines.
That's right.
So, if you got that's one outside, you got a unit in each room.
Yeah, you wanna get head up to five units here.
Right.
You make it on the roof, cause you got, you got more lines going directly to the unit.
Sorry.
Let's drive real long through everything. And another thing versus the Southern Wood Heating versus the Lake Michigan Pedals, which in your area is a one.
Did you, did you bid, how did, how they know?
I just got a message, lady, don't go there and look at me here.
How do you contact the people, did you contact other people, what did you do?
They was all, they were all. I could've went and hit, well, I told him, we played dinner, he said, "We'll get paid," and I said, "Well, we better make sure he's gonna get paid, we do." They were all three home.
I bought these units like you're not a developer. You know, you did any jobs? Is this, is this it?
No.
No, you don't, you have the wall thing.
That's what I'm not about, the wall.
But, but it's, that's not independent, that depends on the thing outside. So, you've got like two rooms that have the wall things that are both off the one outside.
Right.
Yeah. And that one, I have to sit down with the mission.
Cool the lines, comes out the outside, it goes through that, I have evaporator, cool the lines, it's, it's up to.
Three evaporators, you got three.
You got a unit in each room, trying to size them.
You got three, you got three evaporators, you got three circuits.
I'm like, yes, well, I don't understand, you got one unit running out here.
That's right.
How you gonna patrol each unit from the out, I mean?
No.
I know it's got, you got more to patrol, right?
So, you, each one is separate.
How many you can run, actually, you're one heater plus two. But, but that's a, but you think, uh, the most, do we have a motion to go ahead and, uh, tell them to go ahead and do it and then have a street where they wanna get you done, Tom?
What's this forty-nine hundred dollars? What it says, the unit will start with it?
That's labor, everything, that's the unit, the three justice units and the labor. The net closest one was around fifty-seven hundred.
First, the unit. You've got two more esmas besides you.
It was cheaper, it was, the one more was cheaper on the just corner of.
And who can see the esmas, who needs esmas, right?
Jeremy Southwood, you know, and the other one, fugit, fugit, uh, HBC and then, uh,
You called.
Ricky Barney with the other one, and then HPDA, so we have that a lot, I mean, that will be a lot.
You didn't call.
I mean, uh, HML, Ray Jimc, HMZ.
You didn't call Rethink County?
No.
All, all these, all these, that they put it right into here?
Yes, y'all got that, I got the esmas in there. But, uh, y'all, if y'all wanna think about it, you can, just move on to the next thing.
They need heat.
They need? It's a fix-it, but if y'all wanna wait or?
They don't, they don't.
It's already got up.
They understand what I'm, no, that's all.
It's already been a month there, I will, he would always get in there this week, but.
I mean, if you give him other guys opportunity, I got a problem giving him ten pieces cheap.
I never, I never talked to one person, say, "They were doing this sometime."
But you did not call Rethink County.
I did look.
Oh, you made them up, you asked them, I'll say it.
Yeah. Any more? Health insurance, you use it, Roy Darrell. Okay. Uh, the next one is, uh, the set shortage, baby salary in amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, the same with the master salary, and the payer cohort, and the real estate or insurance, and both leave bank tag to July of twenty nineteen. This is the frame, uh, circuit judge's order, only thing is, we can't do shortage of chicken until we get it in, we ain't got, we got the handbag, we don't have the, the other ones, so.
I don't see a issue, uh, what we on this, because we ain't got nothing written, it's, it's like exactly what, uh, the circuit judge's rule is.
Fishing, I've got it written.
Oh, you ain't got a fishing rule, you're not.
I've got it right, what are you gonna do, but I don't have one that's tapped up the computer from there.
Did you ever see that?
Let me see if, uh, maybe if we meet that, we'll bring it back, that's what we need. Let's see, we move on now to the next one, come back to that if you got a big one, agree. Uh, okay, Becky's here, you're the consideration on Rethink County work buddy, uh, you've got it to give Becky one more bill.
We did, uh, we have a lot of fee increases and, um, you know, last year we done all of our insurance for all of our girls, this year we'll be adding, uh, Sharon on, but she'll need insurance, so she will be paying the FCO part, and, um, then we'll have a software bill that's gonna go up, and, uh, with all of our fee increases, I think we'll probably be able to give y'all maybe triple the money next year than we're gonna have y'all, to give y'all this year. Uh, come December, just as soon as, uh, all of our bills that out comes in, we'll be able to give y'all check. I would like for y'all to, if you can, graciously, don't let me borrow any of y'all to get me through January, and then I'll give it back to y'all, if y'all choose not to do that, that's fine, I'll have to live with that. If you don't, then I guess, uh, if I don't come up with enough money to make my salary through Jan- January, and you all, before I'll take pay, you know, when I'm able to pay my girls, you all have to pay my salary. And on my budget, everything we stayed under, you know, the plan that you had, every day we did, um, on the, some of our fees, uh, you know, my salary that go up, our, um, health insurance went up, and actually, they got all that broke down, y'all want, uh, make with me, you know, however, we can work with y'all, we won't work with you all, but we did have nothing to turn over to you all, um, that I feel like that job asked me to do, I feel like I tried to do. And we was in meetings last week about the budget, they gave us some pointers on what to do, uh, and I do have the fee increase, uh, our office is gonna bring in like a lot more money fee wise, and we'll kind of break that down. A lot of folks are, that, kinda like the law states, the legislature, the way it passed, the money is allowed to stay in my office, you know? And I do have to, I have to, like, we're gonna start doing E-file, and, and that's probably gonna, if I can do it within the office without hurting somebody, I'm going to, but it's gonna really take some equipment, and I talked to software. I have to sign a new contract, so that hundred ninety-eight dollars that Tony was paying, I'm on, that's coming down today, I'm gonna have to up that to five hundred something, is it one, five, or six? Six, is it? I'm on, from a hundred ninety-eight, so, you know, our plates are gonna go up, and I still plan on turning the money back over to y'all again this year. So, if you all, you know, wanna make a thing, talk more to me, ask them answer the questions, you're free to do so.
You got a, I'm out, I'm out of book.
I did.
Everything.
We just really need to pass, cause doing it right first, we have to, we can't use our excess space left over, so we have no money to offer right now.
I see you booked, you booked, raised the, the deputy salary.
Right.
Saying a thousand dollars.
Well, last year, the, um, retirement rate was like twenty-one percent, after we done that budget, last year it went up to like twenty-four percent, so the retirement's when, uh, every thousand we go.
But you are gonna get an increase in fees, correct?
Yeah.
They're gonna earn more money for the dollars.
You see the excess space that we predict to turn over?
That's what I'm saying, you're gonna, you're gonna.
And I had that fee increase a month ago, I don't, well, Brandon, I don't think I've got any more, but all of our documents, I think it's.
Oh, yeah.
Five minutes, four quarters.
I've got, I've encouraged everybody to five hundred, I think it's, it's seasons.
Yeah, so that's gonna be applied, more money probably in our office, we'll have, like, you might got you working, like, sixty thousand.
And I was hoping to borrow ten thousand, we just, we're gonna fix it, about what we're gonna, I mean, we had that, and we're gonna give you all money, whatever's left over from nineteen, or all ten thousand.
I'm sure.
Well, we, we're actually, we're actually, the hard is, you know.
Pay the ten thousand back, we still predict to turn over sixty thousand next year, maybe excess fees. So, are you really excited about it?
Uh, over twenty at least. What you like, I just want it. We'll give it over twenty this year, what you think?
Right now, we have to be in G thousand.
We have done.
I've been looking on, I don't know what we done in December, I don't know. I mean, we worked hard, I worked really hard, the sand, you know, that line out of thing, that was kind of a job, but, um, and we worked hard with these budgets, tried to get the county back as much as we can, you know, a lot of clerks are keeping it, I mean, clerks do, uh, and all these, you know, the thing brewing, flat boots and, you know.
Why that, do you play?
You had fifteen thousand two thousand, was that what you said?
Right now, we do. Yeah, I don't, I'm not focused out December, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we worked hard this year to have money left over, and next year's looking like, we'll have like sixty thousand to turn over.
No, I'm not according to measure, and this is my first program with, uh, with you all, but, but Becky may know, Tony would have to bring, say, he had ten thousand dollars to turn over. We were turning back over to him to start on.
I don't, I don't excuse you that from your, but I mean, I, if y'all can have me appreciate it. But if you don't, I think the way to work is, y'all have to pay my salary, and I'm not gonna take my salary if those girls don't get their salary.
Well, we starting off with zero, I mean, doesn't it?
Well, I don't have anything, I don't have no starter checking account with zero, only a hundred bucks.
So you didn't have to do it last year, cause you was on.
Right, right.
Up till.
Yeah, we had that March, so in March, we get the regular supplement, we just. Y'all get, like, next year, y'all need to split.
So, uh.
You got that tick.
I'd like to have ten thousand, if this is something that our camp builds back up, I'll give it back to y'all. And if y'all choose to do that, I'll give it back to you.
We get the tick.
So, so, are we making, are we making a motion to, to approve the Brether County first budget, and to give her ten thousand, how about keep ten thousand dollars to start with, and then her reverse it back?
Y'all need party, y'all want to say that?
Wait, did I say?
I like see, I like see, I like see the way you broke it down, I like see you better.
I wanted to make the call, I was like, I was like, I said, I wanted to make the call, y'all.
And they, and they, and they, and they say it, and they, right here, and they, they all know that, they have told.
You have some rap, you have some rap.
No, I need to say it.
So y'all, y'all, y'all wanna take that with the budget, but do you wanna make a motion to give her ten thousand dollars to start on January?
Whenever I make a motion, you go.
And I'll get here, you can hear.
Right.
So we can see what she actually got.
I don't, I'm taking that out.
Well, see, come January, I won't take it, that's why I miss time, that is.
Here's, here's a motion, we, we gonna let them look at the budget part, but Roy Darrell has a motion to give ten thousand dollars to the clerk office, to start with in January, and then she reverse it back, once she gets on her feet, or get, get her money and reverse it. With the budget, we all wanna look at it, and then.
That's upon the receipt of fifteen thousand, what the clerk office got.
Yeah, I, I can't give you, I can't give you back your. No, we want this tick down, this, we, uh, it's, we, shortly, just as soon as I see I want to take some.
They gotta get through the, the, being assured, you know.
Yeah, like we saying.
Spits, right?
Yeah.
But you got, what he saying, you got fifteen thousand dollars, right, now, turn it, right?
We don't want sure to.
Yeah, right there.
Why can't you just keep it?
I paid the interest, so, I, I.
Late, 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 it's more than a legal way, right?
I have to pay it.
She just paid it off.
Right.
She has to turn it in, and then we, we're not, we're not.
No, mine is actually, have to be given to her right after January the first.
Yeah, actually, we get her eventually, give the ten thousand to start on, and then after the second, she'll be able to bid, so.
Or we just take that, give it to all of them, huh?
Uh, we gonna have another meeting, whatever, we just gotta wait.
We will begin in May, we don't have another.
We're not approving the budget today, we're just, uh, y'all will be able to go over it, but we just, Roy Darrell has a motion to give her ten thousand dollars start on January the third, and then when she gets it back, she can reverse it back. So we're just actually following the clerk office, ten thousand dollars.
We just need, we just need.
She has to turn in, she can't keep ten thousand.
We need.
It's up to you here, it's.
I assume, well, well, I'll watch you that, that, what that amount is. You know what I'm saying? That way we can do it all at once, I don't want to be on the fuse.
She's turning everything, you gotta turn everything in, regarding his fifteen or eighteen.
Yeah, because they all.
And you all start off with zero dollars in January.
And why didn't you let check, let you up yet?
So motion is, if you look and put the budget over, which is a bit later, but the motion has been made to give her ten thousand dollars start with January the first, she will reverse it back, just we'll be honest, so go to.
We'll get what I have, plus I'll pay you back.
Yes.
We'll get what I have, plus I'll pay you the ten thousand back.
Yeah, we get our regular supplement check about the end of February, first of March, and, you know, if the fourth phase, I don't have a quick room, I mean, we might have it the end of January.
Where, that's not really my freedom.
Well, and, and I gotta be honest with you, I mean, uh, the number of real estate things I work on the way down, and there's not a whole lot of loans going on right now, and stuff, and I know you've seen that, that we used to do five a week, as far as sales and property stuff, that may be going down, so.
We went with our numbers from last year.
No, we went with this year, and we didn't even include December.
I don't think the recording system does play that.
And then, you know, we'll be doing game recording, um, people like Quicken Loans, places like that, we'll be, East and New, everything.
Give me an example of, of, of how much, what, what.
Um, well, right now, a three page leave seventeen dollars, it's gonna be forty-six, from what I saw.
Forty-six?
It's like a three, it's like a three nine increase.
But we was eight dollars, now it's forty-seven.
Mary was nine, eight.
We've got the sheriff's voice, so. It's like a, it's like a three nine, three, you can be, if you file on this pen just before, so maybe get somebody for thirteen bucks, it's gonna be twenty-six now.
We look this long.
Something, you got a copy of that one, or you have a copy?
If y'all only give some, these I can just play my salary.
We'll probably give it to her, give her start, we'll go with that.
It's your issue, yeah, I can make it.
So Roy Darrell, make a motion, save it. You know, save the motion, Bronny Bush.
Oh, we both know. We don't pay great, I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah. Ah. Roy Darrell.
Ah.
There you go.
Ah.
Check. On your card. Next thing on this, theme will be at forty-three fifty-eight, BW number forty-seven, and BW number eighty-six, advertise the beer, the shit's grown, been done, and we just need to advertise it, paper two. Yeah, I think everything's been done.
No, we all, I don't think.
Motion. Anyone make a motion, do they have a second? Roy Darrell. Make more.
I have to say.
You want a change?
Yeah.
You're on your phone.
There, there's a bill.
They advertise your bill, yeah.
Ah.
On your card.
There.
Consideration of paid equal bill in amount of three thousand, see, that makes me two hundred bill, three thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight, uh, I can't read my, ninety-eight, ninety-five, six one. Motion by equal.
How is that, is that, what is it, is that?
It's from Lemon, that's from Lemon, that's everything, Lemon twenty, and one will come be seven.
Not that bad.
Thirty-seven, thirty-two, ninety-five.
That's, that curves up, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they look, bill come back before in November to twenty, so.
Hang on, this up, we don't know about, this is fingers, dude.
Somebody can turn this in.
Part of the finger.
Three, all these things except that one hundred and two dollars.
I like seeing.
You got one, you got some lobby in district four, and you got one in district.
Recently, I got two voices.
I got two voices, you should have a copy, did you get a copy?
Okay.
Uh, here you are. His first read already been paid. Uh, eleven twenty bill is six oh four eleven, eleven twenty one bill is twelve twenty-six seventy-nine, eleven twenty-two bill is six twenty-nine ninety-one, eleven twenty-five is five oh six forty-three, and this ain't nothing, well.
Why do they?
She said she had one for December third, I don't have December third, but it lost on, but December the ninth, at five twelve, so that ain't the total, they're one December the third, she said.
That thousand dollar, if they, this is.
Mitch had already paid, uh, the fifteen sixty-one, the five eighty-eight one, and the level level, him had already been paid. Like.
So it is, so it is thirty-seven hundred?
Thirty-seven hundred, but she said she had a bill for twelve three, I ain't got one, Bridgette didn't have one, so, where's she got two?
Bridge?
Yeah, bridge, yeah, but we haven't given you exact amount, uh, cause she said she had one on twelve three, but I don't have one on twelve three. Yeah, I do have one on twelve three, too.
You got it.
That doesn't include the other. So, so the total is thirty-seven, thirty-two, ninety-five. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
I go with either. That's alright, that's, you, you, you want one of those? Thirty-seven, thirty-two, ninety-five. Roy, Roy Darrell, make a motion.
Second.
Uh, hell, can't. Bronny Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell. Make more. Okay, so look, don't look like Earl Merle and mighty history is, uh, do you all look over the police things, if y'all have any records, recall last, uh, uh, in early recall last month, that, uh, y'all have any submitting to him? We're gonna have to leave here to discuss that. Do you wanna?
I really, we don't need that.
No, we, we, we written up, if we don't, uh, we don't really have, we, I am, we didn't really have like eleven, ten.
If I don't, that's, that's, the way he got it rolled up, we don't get no time.
Long day was placed out.
Don't think very much, I thought your salary.
Want, 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 want y'all make for Earl, just charge him one?
He's wanting us to lease for, for person. Well, I don't know.
First, you think, first, or is it?
What's that, five hundred a month, though? I was telling you, the, the two options that they, that's what I'm saying.
Well, he did, yeah, he wanted to, he just had one option, or if he leased it out, he was gonna give us that one, do, right?
Stuff like that.
But if, if you don't lease it out, we, we don't get any of that.
More or less, you want us to buy it, you know, as a person.
Yeah, that was the option, he wanted to sell it for a hundred.
Have you looked at the bill?
I wanted to look at it, I didn't go inside.
You didn't look at it?
It's a big building, I didn't.
That's what you say, I don't mean, that like, you won't look at it for.
I might look at it, I didn't go inside, it's a big building, I don't want it, they move it, you can't move it, it's a plane, it's a drone. You see? Big building, it's over behind the.
Oh, I know, I, I've seen the bill, I don't know where to look at it.
I didn't go inside, I was looking on that side.
It's a big yard.
I don't know where we would benefit to find it, uh, only trouble is on the county property, and I guess the original reason was, uh, when he bought it, the book at ninety-eight or something, and I don't think we can.
Well, the problem about it is, then as it comes to county property, you just can't sell it, you know, you can't, you can't act as a pastor, and they can purchase it and turn it around and sell it, because it's an available spot, uh, but, have you had any interest, have people come in and want to use it or anything?
I, I am, but, uh, it, it.
Coach in the past, but.
We're, we're made of that, I don't know. We're gonna be bad.
At least to the hospital, where Jan Reber, you know, she was questioning the medical, but, but, it's, he ain't gonna.
Well, Roy Darrell's saying, I kinda agree, I mean, if it, uh, if you don't, we didn't pay it, or, I mean, five hundred dollars a month, probably better to take a change on, maybe one to a check, I mean, that'd make a lot more money if you.
We're placing the land for our two thousand dollars.
Yeah. We're just bringing the property that he's.
It's owned by the county, he owns the building.
Right.
We got the bill, and we, we lay it on the land.
And the thing about it is, it's a.
It's almost.
Apparently, it's a fixture. Now, when, when all that happened, it was considered to be moved.
Here, fly ball, here, fly ball, and everyone will be fixed.
People moving, our, they don't, they're, they're very expensive to move out.
They're moving.
Well, I understand, Earl. Yeah, Doc's, or he wants to, uh, or.
Yeah, yeah, you can have that paper right away, it's like.
Well, I bet you can ring that bill, but, oh, you, you, you don't read that.
It's a big, it's a big pride.
Well, I'm saying, I think we talked last month about getting rental houses pulled back.
And we bought it.
You can take whatever percentage is worth for each one, and it would be an objective, like, uh.
I don't think it'd be rental houses, I think if we was gonna buy, we can't pay, pay no more than one of the vehicles.
But rental houses, it tells you what's rented.
Rent, rent.
What, what, what.
Rented.
Yeah, and appraisal, it tells you what's pulled back, it's the, for purchase and sale.
It's probably more five hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, and I have, I have a real, like, analysis on my building for the state, because that's what I do. Yeah, they take, they take similar rent buildings, rent, tell you what you should turn, what's possible to do, that's all dictated by the market.
So, so, what, what we wanna do on this thing, Roy Darrell made a motion to look to lease up the property, save it off for five hundred dollars a month, uh.
Maybe we oughta just wait to Darrell, get to make, see whether he come up with anything for it.
Whatever, do we have a second, we don't have a second, if I have.
You put that motion.
Well, he would not make a motion to charge five hundred, if we don't have, leave back on second.
But that's not, that's not, I mean, that's not what I'm asking, he wants to lease it to us, not to him.
Oh, that's often we give him, if he wants to pay five hundred dollars a month.
You gotta have a agreement to have a.
Oh, yeah, they say that.
You gotta have somebody.
Five hundred dollars a month.
You can't just make a motion, but he ain't here, he can agree to it. You gotta have another party here, I'm saying.
Okay, do y'all wanna take your turn, do we take five hundred dollars a month, or y'all wanna just talk, make a second on it?
It's just not, they just made Dr. Darrell her a bad.
Well, proceed, I think what you're doing is, Darrell put an offer out there.
Yeah, it's all, it's all.
On the counter offer.
Yeah, it's forty-five, it's forty-five.
But you ain't got the other parties to react to.
But that's not what I'm saying, the counter offer, they're gonna be sitting in.
Okay, so we don't have a second, so we'll win down later, second. Okay, the consideration to pay, uh, fifty-two body shop amount, three hundred eighty-four dollars for the old nine eleven, nine one one truck, the vanistin, uh, you just got done with your yesterday, the whole, that's the home, the side, we'll get that set up.
A little more?
Yeah, yeah, just on the side, about four inches, the side, just take it here.
Second.
Make more.
Ah.
Tony Bush.
Ah.
Hell, can't. Roy Darrell, I'll speak to him. Okay, dick position, so I got, just save it for last one, uh, BB Clifton Hudson, if you wanna take George, uh, Ricky's position, at the amount of fifteen dollars an hour, and Caitlin Baker, we pay twelve dollars an hour, he will be taken from Clifton's position over. And he also will pay the bond of a hundred and one dollars and eighty cents, sorry, and that will make them active January first, twenty twenty, do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Tony Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Make more.
Ah.
Hell, can't. Motion, carry, let's see, next thing is, uh, uh, motion to pay reverse, uh, can, can bring one back, ninety-five dollars, uh, to the.
Motion, second.
Uh, Roy Darrell. Make more. Hell, can't.
Second.
Ninety-five.
Ah.
Okay, and then we need to add, and we need to, we need to check something here for legal improvement, and.
You have these ten invoices here, uh.
What's the, what's the man label?
Uh, the first one, uh, sure, associations for ninety-four dollars even, uh.
The most, Mr.?
Four eighty-four even, and then the second one, for the floor replacement, is thirty-nine hundred even, and dollars we draw on, uh, his programs.
Thirty-nine hundred dollars for one?
Yes.
Motion.
Forty-three hundred eighty-four dollars, you told him, the, the, the invoices, through the sheriff's department to come out of his programs, so. Do you make a motion?
Yes, yes, sir.
Have a second?
Second.
Hell, can't.
Ah.
Tony Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell. Make more. And let's see, I guess, got it, like, we've got a motion, I need to, to do a motion to go anything.
Thirty-nine.
A motion to go anything, station, uh, litigation, in, no motion.
No.
Have a second?
Second.
Tony Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell. Make more.
Ah.
Hell, can't.
Ah.
Ah, give a comment, I don't know. Okay, this time, I'm gonna ask everybody to step down. I think we got, after this, if the German told, you wanna hang around, you can.
Chris, we turned it off.
We're good.
Oh, we're good.
We're on, got you.
Okay, motion come back out, dick position.
Motion. Second.
Tony Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Make more.
Ah.
Okay, consider a motion to sign the settlement, through the phone, uh, through this.
Motion, second.
Roy Darrell. Make more.
Ah.
Hell, can't. Tony Bush. And then, and, and.
Now, this, this is fact, for the, you know, of course, you guys set up this, helped you, this, uh, Brether County Rec Ravement, okay, now, I need to file, because the way that you done, I need to file the Arcism Corporation, Mitch has done, uh, a good set here, but, who you guys can all.